It's seven o'clock and I'd like to welcome everybody to today's city council meeting for January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Roll call please, Miss Leder.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Member Volter.
Here.
Member Neary.
Here.
Member Neiman.
Here.
Member Kelly.
Here.
Member Lovins.
Here.
Member Basler.
Here.
City Administrator Fawcett.
Here.
City Attorney Evanson.
Here.
A full house and we always appreciate that. Thank you very much. Now let's go rise for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much.
I love it.
Now. Now personally, Jennifer, the evening is the mayor's report, which is mine again. And I'd like to recognize two of our citizens here in Dayton, Dennis and Denise Ashford. Mr. Ashford served on city council and Ms. Ashford has been a major proponent and friend of the city for a long time, so welcome tonight.
Thank you.
What I have here in my hands. So for the past.
Oh, watch that again.
This is in church, man. What I have in my hands, for the past thirty years, Dennis and Denise have been working with Light Up Dayton on giving back to the city of Dayton, making sure the kids have a good Christmas and bringing joy to the children of Dayton. And they do so faithfully. They do it because they want to do it and they're good stewards to the city and the children. So Dennis and Denise, in recognition to your thirty years of service to the city and to our children, I want to recognize you with a plaque. You're very welcome.
Thank you.
That's a good picture.
They just show the council. I don't think they've seen it yet.
Thank you for all you do.
Oh, here it goes. Please enjoy it.
Hold it up there for me.
Yeah, he's been saying that for quite a few years. Very nice.
Thank you.
Very deserving. You're one of my favorites.
Mrs. Claus looks really nice.
I'm a very lucky candidate. I'm a very lucky candidate.
Scott. Scott, what's this one?
Sorry.
He's remotely set in.
Oh, yeah, yeah. One second. Let me screenshot that.
You're welcome. Thank you. Well, thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
We'll see you all.
Thank you all.
We appreciate it. Bye.
Congrats.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye.
Hey, make sure you buy your wife dinner tonight.
So tonight we would like to address the city with the state of the city. All right, it's an address that we've been meaning to do for a while now and to let everybody know at the beginning of the year, where we ended up last year and where we're going in the upcoming year. So it's my great pleasure to present Dayton's first state of the city address. This address kicks off a new year and increase level of transparency for the city of Dayton, providing our community with information about operations, past success, and future goals. We have a new city website, which you'll see later tonight, as a testament of our renewed efforts to provide our residents, businesses, and visitors with readily available access of news, information, our programs, our progress, and our projects. City of Dayton had a number of success stories in the year of two thousand and twenty-one. Despite yet another challenging year due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, six new businesses opened storefronts in our downtown business district, several of which received funding from our DBA, which is known as the Dayton Business Association or Assistance Grant Program. Those businesses are Tuba Bakery, Takari Nogal, Horton's Barbershop, Willard Advisors, Glow Salon, and we even had that Dayton High School graduate, Dr. Jamie Herbst, return home to open up America's Foot Center on Sixth and Vine. In addition, Garden Company renovated the old gas station at Sixth Avenue. We all know that is Bud's Fowlers gas station. Two real estate developers purchased Tony Old's saloon with plans to make renovations to it and building improvements are now underway for the Riverside Marketplace on Sixth and O'Fallon. As a response to local businesses adversely affected by the pandemic, the city also provided a thousand-dollar grant to twenty-nine of these businesses and also enacted Dayton Dining Program, which mailed out five-dollar coupons to each Dayton resident so they could use them at local restaurants. This business, this program encouraged our neighbors to visit our restaurants and spend even more than the initial five-dollar coupon. More than three hundred residents utilized this program to help support Dayton businesses during this pandemic. Now, last year, we also saw a great interest in the city of Dayton from numerous real estate developers. They are adding new businesses, they are adding new residents, and they are adding new neighbors into our community for the first time in many years. On our riverfront, the Gateway Apartments opened its doors in May through the Tapestry on the River Apartment Complex. They opened in two thousand and twenty. It sold for seventy million dollars in September. Now, that's more than double its previously assessed value in two thousand and nineteen, and it was renamed Manhattan on the River. In October, Arlington Properties, a Birmingham, Alabama-based developer that built the original Tapestry on the River, obtained zoning approval to build another complex in Dayton. This one with another two hundred and sixty-five apartments on a site located just east of the Manhattan Harbor next to the marina, bringing more Dayton neighbors and friends to our neighborhood. Other Manhattan Harbor developments that the city proved were the construction of two high-end single-family homes at the Commons and construction of two multifamily and housing projects at the Lookout and also the Beth. Both they are currently under construction, just east of where Berry Street Connectors to the Boulevard will be built. Now, one of the most exciting and upcoming projects is the rehabilitation of historic Rainey Building, also known as the Burton Building, at Sixth Avenue and Berry Street. Orleans Development Company, and if you're not familiar with Orleans, Orleans has done multiple projects like this throughout the region, very respected and very diligent in their work. They purchased a four-story, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven-year-old building back in July and plans to spend over one-point-five million dollars to renovate this building into commercial space on the first floor and luxury loft-style, yet affordable apartments on the upper floors. That's going to change the makeup of the city. That's going to change the central business district of this town. And it was due to a lot of work by this administration and our council. Now, in two thousand and twenty-one, the primary focus of my administration was, and it's going to continue to be, increased code enforcement. This past year, the city established a database of ten problem vacant, blighted, city properties in our city. So we created this ten problem city properties. We started to work on them, and then we got to a second top-ten list. The city also enacted a code enforcement amnesty program that encouraged property owners with outstanding code enforcement violations to clean up their properties or face redoubled code enforcement fines they did. So what we did was we found ten of the properties that were a problem within this town, and we got to work on them. We talked to the building owners, we worked with them, tried to help them out, and they're improving. And then we have the second list. Overall, we've made great strides in improving our housing stock in our neighborhoods in the past year. And we have to certainly thank city staff, and we're looking at Cassie, we're looking at Jay, we're looking at Jared, and thank them for the homeowners and residents who have joined the cities in cleaning up our neighborhoods and our streets. We expect to see even more improvement in this area of focus in the upcoming years. Now, two thousand and twenty-one was a great year for our parks. Sergeant Park is now fully open to the public and became a natural oasis for hikers and residents who can now enjoy two miles of scenic trails on the southern end of our city. We replaced unsightly, unwelcoming, chain-linked bark-wire fence and replaced it with attractive wooden fences. We made improvements to the parking lot and sanitary stormwater infrastructure. We planted over a hundred of trees. They removed many invasive species of plants and installed new trailheads and trails throughout the park. Our neighbors, our friends are using these parks to enjoy their life. At Gillin Park, one of our premier parks, in partnership with Dayton Independent Schools, we installed a new concrete backstop behind the girls' softball field. This allows access to ADA group folks who may not be able to use a, might have a wheelchair or might have a walker, and they are now able to see their kids play softball. How cool is that? And a huge, huge thanks to our park board and especially to Amanda Bowman-Basler for her work on this work and our city volunteers who are not paid. They do this out of a love for their city and for their parks, and we thank you for your ongoing efforts to benefit our parks. The Dayton's fortunate to have a highly qualified, highly qualified and efficient city staff. In two thousand and twenty-one, I hired two members of the city management team, and we've seen great success with this new leadership team. In March, I hired Jay Fawcett. Jay, quite accomplished. He was the city manager in Covington. And then our new city administrator, and he and I together hired Jared Parks. Jared, where is Jared? Jared, we brought him in from Morgantown, Kentucky, as our assistant city administrator, and we're building a great team that is taking care of our city's projects. Now, last year, the city council, who had done an amazing job over the last two years, approved a substantial increase in pay for our public safety personnel. So both our fire and our police were in need of pay increase. We were losing fire and police to neighboring cities, but this council approved a pay increase to keep them. We kept competitive with surrounding municipalities, and we increased our employer retention in both departments. And just by dealing with unprecedented pandemic for our second year and the increased costs and expenses related to it, and because of the new economic growth that we have seen in Dayton and increased property values, we are able to maintain a financial stability and establish a strong foundation for economic growth. Our city staff achieved great significant success in our departments during this past year, a list of which can be found on our new website, www.datenky.com. I encourage everybody to check it out. It wouldn't lie today. In two thousand and twenty-one, the city emphasized strategic planning by seeking input from our council during a day-long strategic planning session in the spring, as well through interaction with our city boards and committee members and residents of our city, including the city's first-ever satisfaction survey, which was brought on to us by Mr. Parks. This strategic planning has allowed us to prioritize and make decisions based on the invaluable input provided by the year, city of the year in two thousand and twenty-two. In two thousand and twenty-two, the city will encourage this emphasis with its first-ever Dayton Vision Meeting, gathering of residents, staff, board members, and community stakeholders to coordinate ideas, events, and strategic planning. So this past year, we've had multiple events, multiple meetings within this room where we talk about what do you want? What do you see as good? What do you see as bad? And we're going to continue those efforts in those meetings with city staff, city council, and our residents over two thousand and twenty-two. And I encourage everybody to please to involve yourself with these events. So as you can see, two thousand and twenty-one was a bear year for the city of Dayton, and this year it looks like it's going to even be better. Two thousand and twenty-two is going to be a big year for the city of Dayton in terms of new infrastructure and developments within our city. A number of projects are underway in the Manhattan Harbor, Neighborhood Manhattan District. It'll be finally finished with a new road being constructed from past the apartments onto Mary Ingalls Highway. The long-awaited Berry Street Connector project, which is extremely important to our administration and our city, will provide needed connection to our central business district and allow our police and fire departments easier access to these neighborhoods is going to be completed. Improvement on the intersection of Manhattan Boulevard, O'Fallon, and Fifth Avenue will improve vehicle and pedestrian safety at this dangerous intersection. That being designed and destruction is slated to depart on this product in the spring. New sidewalks, trails, and pedestrian improvements also will be undertaken by the city in our upcoming months, with several long-awaited projects coming to fruition, including construction of the new sidewalks on the west side of Dayton Pike from Seventh Avenue to Chateau Ridge and also on Belmont Road. Construction will also start on Phase Two of the Riverfront Commons River Edge Trail Project and the pedestrian bumpouts that we've been waiting for so long on Sixth Avenue. Design plans for these are in the final stages of commons and will be completed within this year. But we also have a bunch of streets that we need to take care of that have been historically Dayton streets. And ten of those will be resurfaced in the city during two thousand and twenty-two. The city is going to plan to spend two-hundred-thousand dollars to repay sections of nine streets in the city based on a road improvement priority ranking system created by our city engineers in the state of Kentucky's transportation cabinet. We're also expecting to repay parts of Route Eight as well. The new year will concede construction of several new stormwater mitigation projects in the city of these locations. Fourth and Kenton, Urban Terrace, Dayton Pike, Second and Walnut, and Grand Park. The city is continually working to improve our operations, increase services to our citizens, and provide additional opportunities for our residents to be involved in our community. When city council had its first strategic planning session last spring, it came up with thirty projects, programs, initiatives that we wanted to see implemented in the city. And I promise you, the vast majority of these strategic goals have been accomplished within the last nine months. Nine months since that last list was created, and we're working on the others. Now, one of our major goals for the past year was to improve our external communications with the city, also known as being more transparent. Like I mentioned just a few minutes ago, our new website, DaytonKentucky.com, has up-to-date city news, information, and I encourage all citizens and friends and visitors to visit DaytonKentucky.com to see our new website and keep up to date on our city's direction, including viewing our interactive maps and such as one that shows the infrastructure projects for two thousand and twenty-two. In addition to our new website, we've also worked hard to improve our electronic newsletter, our e-newsletter, and our social media presence. If you haven't done so yet, I encourage you to sign up for our e-newsletter and like us on Facebook, like us on Instagram. We have a Twitter page, and we don't have TikTok yet, but it will be there. And you'll get the latest news and information from our city. Now, closing, as we look to the new year, the future in our city, we want to continue our efforts to encourage entrepreneurs to start new business ventures, create new jobs within our city. We will also continue to encourage developers and others to responsibly rehab their homes, build new homes, and take advantage of our wonderful views, our excellent schools, and close-knit community. Dayton is very fortunate to have a large amount of city council members. City staff members, volunteers, and residents are all working together to create an environment of energy, vibrancy, and growth in our community. Our infectious energy is creating many of the positive impacts that we're experiencing today, from the attraction of new residents and new developers to our community, to the opening of new businesses on Sixth Avenue and the continued success of our Dayton Green Devils. So I want to thank all these people. I want to thank them for making a huge difference within our community. Your creativity, your ambition, and your energy are the primary reasons for our city's recent success and why our community's future looks to be so bright right now. So thanks to everybody in this room. Thanks to city council. Thanks to all the volunteers. Thanks for making all these things possible. I thank you. In this same vein, tonight we are very lucky to have Mr. Jay Brewer. Jay, who we all know is our superintendent for the city of Dayton Schools or Green Devils. Jay is going to give a update on the State of the Schools address.
If Jay can connect to, to Monja Technology.
This is your office, man.
I know. In my own place, and it's like, we'll see. You know how technology is. It's fun.
Well, he's doing that. I just want to let everybody know, maybe watch me at home, is that, that speech and all the things you talked about is available on the website. So if you go on the website or any website, you'll be able to click on the mayor's State of the City address and read it for yourself. You'll be grateful to hear everything tonight at home.
I don't know if I can maneuver from all over here. I'll walk around. I'm trained as a fourth-grade classroom teacher, so standing behind a podium is not what I need to do. But I guess with this, with Scott, is that what I need to speak into or am I free to?
Yeah, you're right there. If I'm able to hit the button there, make sure it's on. Just hold it down for a second, and it should light up. There you go.
There we go. All right. So again, thank you, Jay Brewer. This is my tenth year, believe it or not. Jeff Volter's like, "Not?" I don't believe it. Jeff was on the board that hired me ten years ago, so I'm in my thirtieth year of education. So twenty-second administration. Grew up in Londo, Kentucky, so I thoroughly understand the importance of small schools, small cities. You can't separate Dayton schools from the city of Dayton. You can't separate the other way around. So it's been a pleasure, my ten years working with all the city councils, three different mayors that have served. It's just been a great collaborative relationship and continues to this day between the police, the fire, Rick, whatever we need. Jay has been fantastic. Everybody's just been fantastic to work with. So we're going to give you an update on the school. You'll have to come back every year and do this. This will be fun. So Dayton Independent Schools, that's who we are. We inspire, engage, and grow. And our mission is to inspire, engage, and grow each of our students. So, and we kind of use this as a formula, and sometimes our students use this against me. Like when their children can, or when the students aren't allowed to take their boyfriends to homecoming. They will tell me that's not very inspiring, and it can't be engaged, and it doesn't help them to grow. But our students definitely know our mission, and we take that very seriously. But we do have the three key words in our mission, inspire, engage, and grow. We do start with that. We must inspire our students to do the work that we do in modeling for them. School isn't what it used to be. For those of us who remember school, you kind of started in kindergarten, or even some folks in here might have started in first grade. We pretty much go from birth to college now. We have a daycare center, which begins with them at birth, and we now have students that are graduating high school with at least thirty hours of college credit. So depending on the hour of the day, I'm anywhere from a director of a daycare center to a president of a college. So a pretty exciting day that we have. We have everything from academics to athletics, from school nutrition to mental health, and from family support to physical health. We pretty much cover all those things for the students that we serve. This first slide here, and this will be a little bit interesting to digest, this is newly released data. And the reason I share this is because the mission that we have has to align to the children that we serve. And I'll say that again. The mission that we have has to align with the children that we serve. And what we see here is one out of every four students that we serve are currently living in poverty. And we have to design our supports around that. So this is recently released data from the U.S. Census of Children Living in Poverty. And you can see that statistic there. Family of four under twenty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-two qualifies for that. Questions on that? Questions at any time, just like in fourth grade. Put your hand up. At any time, feel free to answer. We're going to tell a few stories about some of our kids because I think that best describes what we're doing. This is Joseph McGuire. Joey is a senior at Dayton High School. He completed the computer information technology courses at Gateway. He is now a certified test-out pro with an A-plus certification. Joe works for us, works over half the day for us, and then takes college classes online. We are paying Joe to fix our one-to-one devices and run our student technology department. Joe actually has a badge to get in and out of every school door and on our campus. So Joe's a great example of the type of kids that we have here running our IT department. With this certification, believe the salary range Joe could get out and make would be somewhere between fifty-six to seventy-eight thousand if Ben doesn't pick him up real soon right away to work with him. So Joe is a great example of a student doing a great job for us here at Dayton High School. I couldn't find a picture of Devin Slumber because Devin really hasn't been on our campus a whole lot. And you're thinking, "What's up with that?" Well, we have to be extremely flexible and nimble with our kids. Devin came to us as a junior, and he stated he wanted a career in HVAC after high school. So what we try to do is work with our students individually. Devin has been attending Gateway to complete his HVAC courses to get certification in that. He's finishing up his high school requirements online. He's currently going to Gateway in the evenings and completing his HVAC courses. He is currently working in the HVAC field. All right, so that's the flexibility that we are creating for our juniors and seniors here on our campus. Very non-traditional in a lot of different ways. Unfortunately for me, there's kids that I used to see each and every day that I don't see anymore. In particular, their junior and senior's year because they're spending so much time off of our campus, and that's intentional. We want our kids off our campus, kind of out of that Dayton bubble, getting their feet in the ground outside. Here's a great example of a young lady that I hardly see anymore. Nellie Bushley is currently out at Northern Kentucky University. She's taking online and in-person classes. She will graduate from high school with enough credits to begin her junior year in the education program. So that's an example of what we're doing with our kids. Pretty unbelievable what these kids are achieving these days. I was still struggling with my locker combination at the elementary school, and these kids are walking out with that. These two young men, Logan and Alex, attend our Area Technical Technology Center out in Campbell County. The vocational school, some people like to refer to it as that. It is actually the Area Technical Center. They're both in the electrical program. They've been working full-time during the day at local businesses their senior year in the electrical field. They're both. Uh, they're both, uh, completing their high school requirements for the state online. And they check in weekly at the ATC in order to make sure they are career ready with their certifications. And I thought I had one more. Did I skip? Uh, I didn't skip anybody. Alright. Student achievement, we're going to talk about that. Um, and, and what you see in the lower corner is some of these comparisons uh, to what I call the River City districts. You got Dayton, Bellevue, Londo, Covington, Newport. We throw Herlangur in there. I know they're really not on the river, but demographically they fit in with us in a lot of the projects that we do. So student achievement among the River City districts, uh, last year we had the second highest, uh, ACT score uh, among the River City districts. We have the top performing middle school among the River City districts. We have the top performing district in writing when you take our elementary, middle school and high school scores, uh, among the River City districts. Our elementary and high school ranked either number one or number two in all tested areas among the River City districts. So we're very proud of that. Now keep in mind, sometimes when you go back to that first slide and you say childhood poverty and some of those challenges that you get in creating academics and some of those, uh, schools that we're competing with in that area, we're pretty proud of the work that we're doing with our students. High school opportunities. We currently have 27 juniors and seniors in dual credit. So they're off, off campus either at Northern or at Gateway. Our school is paying for a lot of that, almost all of that. And that's been a specific thing that our school, we're not alone. Bellevue does that, Newport does that, Covington does that, Londo does that. To incentivize kids to get that firsthand experience while they're still in school. They have that first taste of success at college, hoping that, uh, really guarantees them that completion once they get up and going. So we have 27 juniors, 27 seniors, uh, currently off campus taking dual credit. We have 26 juniors and 27 seniors in the ATC center out in Campbell County. Again, our goal, if I can get every single junior and senior off of our campus for at least half the day, I'm going to feel great about that. So we got a lot of kids doing that. We have people coming to us all the time saying, "What about this?" And we say yes. We have 14 juniors and 14 seniors in the career technology education pathways. That's logistics, that's healthcare, that's IT at Gateway. We currently have six seniors at a skilled trade program at Newport High School. We have one sophomore, an ROTs, uh, program out of Scott High School. And we have one junior at the Gatton Academy down in Western Kentucky for the youth scholars academy. So when our students come to us and they say, "Can we do this?", we try to find a way to say yes. So that would be an example of where, kind of like where's Waldo with our kids anymore? I mean, they, they really are all over the place and I give great credit, uh, first of all to our board, who by the way Diane Huff, Diane is our vice chair, is here with us for their willingness to say yes to these types of things and to our high school administration to say yes to those things as well. Not to be outdone, the Little Devils do a great job. Uh, we have a five-star preschool and we also have a five-star Head Start program. Not every school district will bring in a Head Start program. We bring in Head Start with the four, uh, even younger kids to come in and have an holiday experience. Uh, we have a lot of students coming in with a lot of needs at those levels, so we need to get them into that early childhood program that we have. Um, we are working with a nationally recognized program called the Reading League to develop a comprehensive reading program at Lincoln Elementary. So that's through a grant, so we're excited about the work being done there. Uh, we have added, due to the pandemic, everyone's heard about all these extra federal funds. So we've been able to add reading and math interventionist and support, uh, to close those academic gaps that have happened during the pandemic. We have been very fortunate, uh, to receive a grant through WCPO and the Scripps Howard Foundation. Raise your hand if you remember these Scholastic book fairs when we went to school. Exactly. You don't have to raise your hand if you remember being disappointed because you couldn't afford any books. Alright, we have a number of kids who can't afford books. For the last three years, we've been gifted grants for Scholastic book fairs that provide free books to all of our kids. No child is denied when they go into the Scholastic book fair. And, uh, this year, it's amazing. Every year they come back and they say, "We're going to do it again and we're going to do more because WCPO is great." Uh, we have three book fairs where each child will receive five books each time, uh, through the Scholastic book fair. And that's a great credit to the administration and goes above and beyond to work with Scripps Howard and, and Scholastic when they come in, uh, to do these types of things for the kids in the community. So just a wonderful, wonderful, uh, thing that's being done in our schools. All of our kids preschool through 12th grade have one-to-one learning devices, uh, from iPads to tablets to, um, computers. They, they all have those, so that almost seemed to be a given in the pandemic hit. It became necessary because of virtual learning. We were able to quickly, uh, move into that. And then we have added multiple layers of mental health support, trauma and parental care within our school. Uh, so we've added a number of counselors and therapists to help our students that are dealing with a lot of the challenges that we see kids dealing with these days. Extracurricular and clubs. You see a whole bunch of clubs there at Lincoln Elementary. From the art club, academic teams, to SPLP, to garden clubs, uh, to the chess club, to the singing club, to the five, uh, Five Day Club, uh, led by, uh, Tim Shinova with the book study, The Five Parts of a Man. Uh, if you're familiar with that work, uh, it's a great club that he's doing. And then at Dayton High School, you can see all the opportunities that our students have there as well. Uh, please recognize that there's a few there that, uh, are unique along the river. Uh, we may be the only River City school with a bowling team. Uh, and I believe we are still the only River City school with an esports team. Um, so we, again, our kids, our community comes and say, "Can you do this?", we say, "Yeah." So our bowling team also has a component of Unified Bowling. Uh, students that are identified with special needs are able to participate with that. Our Future Business Leaders of America, they're a very, uh, well-recognized club here and travel throughout the state in doing those things. And then the little asterisk at the bottom, uh, it's not unusual for Dayton to be recognized in Northern Kentucky to have the most students, uh, being recognized as triple threat athletes in Northern Kentucky. A triple threat athlete is a child that, uh, letters, varsity and three different, uh, sports. So sometimes we'll have quadruple sport athletes, uh, because our kids do so many different varsity sports, which in this day and age, if you follow where most schools are going, most children, they specialize and they do one sport all year round. We kind of flip the script on that. We have many students that there is no off-season. They go straight from the football or the volleyball court, straight into basketball, straight into, "What do we do?", uh, "Do we do the track?", and yeah, it never stops, does it? Never stops. Which is good because you got to keep them, absolutely have to keep them, uh, growing. So, uh, as you can see, we got a lot of opportunities for our kids. We have a club that we started all 10-plus years ago. It's called Drug Free Clubs of America. Uh, our students voluntarily sign up for this. And they, uh, when you sign up to be in the Drug Free Clubs of America, uh, you, uh, submit to a voluntary drug screening test. And then they are randomly tested throughout the school year. So it's a great assurance for, uh, parents to kind of have that safety net for their kids during this challenging time. It's also a great opportunity for our students to build that belief system that drugs aren't for me during my, uh, young and, uh, influencing influential years. Uh, this year, um, uniquely to our club, uh, we had 30 staff members enrolled. Which I'm going to say is the, two of those numbers are probably the highest outside of Beechwood. Beechwood does a fantastic job of enrolling students, uh, into the Drug Free Clubs of America. Although our percentage may be higher than what they have, but I guarantee our 30 staff membership enrollment is the highest that we have there. So proud of the Drug Free Club. And then we've got a great alumni association that, uh, continues to do great work for us. Uh, many of you attended the alumni reunion in Gilland Park this year. Uh, several of you have attended the Wall of Distinction ceremony that we've, uh, had the past couple of years. And that's where we induct distinguished graduates of Dayton High School, um, for efforts beyond high school. So it can be academic work, it can be community service, it can be professional work, uh, it can be service in the military. So, most of the time, a lot of schools will focus on that. Next, third bullet, which is the Athletic Hall of Fame. Uh, where, uh, students are recognized for their accomplishment in high school. Uh, our wall of distinction goes beyond that and Buddy Ditts, uh, does a great job of leading the efforts there. And then we do have a growing database of alumni, uh, that we're gathering and trying to get, uh, some energy behind them as well. Family support, we do have two family resource centers within each of our schools. Uh, and their mission is to remove non-academic barriers to learning. As you can see from some of the statistics we've shared, we have a lot of non-academic, uh, barriers, uh, for our kids. Uh, these two programs assist, uh, students with food, closing, housing assistance, job location, trauma that's going on in the families. Uh, they work closely with social services to protect students and families. Uh, we currently have a food pantry that serves about 25 students per month. Uh, and then every Friday, if you walk the halls, you'll see about 84 students receiving, uh, Friday power packs for the weekend, uh, from the free store Food Bank, which runs to United Way. So that's a great, uh, program that our family resource does. And then a great example of holiday assistance over Thanksgiving. They provided 140 families with a holiday meal and for Christmas, uh, 401 children were provided holiday gifts and 150 families received holiday meal assistance. So again, going beyond just algebra, geometry and history, uh, that full wraparound support that our families need. Uh, we support our local businesses and again, I just want to say thank you for City of Dayton, uh, for everything they do. They're, they're, they're always, uh, on the spot. Uh, Hometown Heroes is a great partner with us and Nataza, Wiseman Construction, Archie's Garage, Hansman's, Ruby Pharmacy, the Marathon Gas Station, all of those individuals. We reach out and we try to keep whatever business that we can do, uh, through Dayton Schools with the local businesses here in Dayton. So always looking for those opportunities to support our local businesses. Buildings and grounds, these are some updates that we've been doing, uh, over the years. Uh, Lincoln Elementary, a couple, wow, was that Jeff? About seven, eight years ago, I guess? Seems like yesterday. Uh, we went in and gutted the whole school. Uh, so put in new bathrooms, uh, new flooring, everything's been painted, new bulletin boards. Uh, we have now added new students, new classroom furniture in each of the rooms. The beautiful display board that you see here are in every single classroom in our district. Actually, the last room, and I proudly say that the last room in the district to get this digital board was in this room. And that's how we operate here, students first. Uh, we replaced the gym floor, upgraded the library. You may notice new LED lighting in this room from last year. We have completely done LED lighting throughout the district on an energy savings project. Uh, we have secured entrances, we've upgraded locks, we have new scoreboards in the gym. And of course, we have a new, uh, digital marquee on the outside of Lincoln. The high school also has the secured entrance. You see, a couple of years back, we re, totally flipped the whole high school, put the new entrance on there, uh, changed it to, one of my favorite quotes, to the students said, "Our school used to look like a prison and now we look like a nightclub." Okay. Let's go with that. And if you walk through our hallways, when we change periods in between there, we got a great system that we play music between each of the the classroom exchanges. So sometimes it looks like a disco in a hallway. Uh, but they also have new di- digital display boards, LED lighting. Uh, we've put a new cafeteria floor in, we've upgraded the library. Uh, we have a very sophisticated, uh, security system that we work with on the video cameras that Chief keeps us, uh, informed with. Uh, we do have a full-time, uh, school resource officer, I should have added that somewhere in this presentation, uh, that the city partners with us to make sure our campus is secure. Uh, because if you think about, uh, where during the day, um, are the most people in Dayton assembled, it's right here on our school campus. So we really appreciate that. It's not unusual to have a cruiser here in the morning in Gilland Park, a cruiser over here at Clay Street and then a dismissal as well. So we feel very secure, uh, here on our campus. Um, we've added new scoreboards, improved our weight room and a batting cage. Uh, we had the softball field upgrade. That's a great example of us just pick up the phone and we had a, uh, a parent say, "You know, it's really hard to get our, 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 our father in there with a wheelchair for softball season because of the gravel behind the dugouts." And just one phone call, let's partner to get this done. It's also been a tremendous bonus for keeping that area without the gravels and the rocks and then the kids at recess have been able to use that area as well. So, um, Dayton High School, you may also notice that last board, we're starting, we continue to purchase multiple lots of land around this area. Uh, so we currently have taken three, we're in the process of, uh, purchasing another one here that you'll see come down in the next month or so. Um, with the ultimate vision of doing something between the two schools with a sports complex, which has been the dream since the 1980s. So we don't have any firm drawings of that. We don't have anything, uh, official of that because we still have to get, get our way through a couple more pieces of the property, get our way through a whole lot. You guys are very familiar with the state and red tape and all those things that are going, but, um, we are, each and every day, we're a little bit closer to that goal of what we're going to call, uh, Project One Campus and making this all, uh, one campus for our community. So that's going on. And then of course Davis Field, we haven't ignored that. Uh, we've repaired the main wall up there. If you've been up there recently, uh, we've provided a windscreen around the field and we've replaced about 15 rows of concrete with, uh, Wiseman Construction. If you ever want a really tough job, uh, break concrete up and carry them up and down the steps of Davis Field, uh, would be quite a full day's work. Uh, and then we put a new sound system up at Davis Field as well. So we haven't ignored, uh, that, uh, beauty up there either. And then we're in our last slide here. So challenges and opportunities. So challenges that we have before us, student enrollment. Pandemics kind of whacked us a little bit. We've lost about 100 students. Uh, that's not unusual when you look at, uh, districts of high poverty. Uh, that hits that, uh, family, uh, those families pretty good and they start moving around. Um, you also may be impacting student enrollment because of the housing market. The good news is we have houses flipping here in Dayton. The bad news is some of those houses flip and our families come to us and say, "Landlord is now selling the house and we have to get out. And we can't afford to buy the house, so we've got to go somewhere else." So we're seeing a double combination of loss of student enrollment, uh, due to pandemic and the housing market. I think it's a good thing that houses flip when we have homeownership. We're just going to have to make that adjustment. I know our good friends in Bellevue have had student enrollment drop. If they've seen the dynamics of their housing market change in their community. So it's kind of helpful that we can kind of watch and learn from them. Uh, pandemic, yeah, it's, it's, it's a real challenge for all of us. So, um, I think that's understood. And then continuing to support our students and families with the wraparound services would be the challenges that we have. Our opportunities, uh, our people, our people are wonderful. You know, your people are always your greatest resource. So from our board, to our teachers, to our coaches, to the people who volunteer in our schools, our people make the difference. And then our community. I mean, this one vision that we all have for our kids, they have great opportunities, is, uh, just fantastic. And then, um, I'm excited about the property development here in Dayton. Uh, the collaboration that we're seeing, the growth that we're seeing, uh, it is bringing, uh, some financial benefits to the school district that our kids are going to benefit from years to come. And then, uh, I hundred percent believe in the mission that we have, which is to inspire, engage and grow our kids. And I believe that's what we do each and every day. So that is the update of the state of the nation of Dayton Independent Schools. I don't know if there are any questions, comments, thoughts, suggestions?
Jay, how about, how about the pandemic in terms of staffing? How is that going to, is that going to be a challenge for you in the upcoming?
Going to be, and, and it is. It's currently a challenge, yeah, because the quarantine laws and rules or regulations, I mean, just staffing the buildings. I would not be surprised if you s- see a couple days, weeks where we have to shut down because of lack of staffing. And that'll happen to many schools. Hopefully we can get through the next couple of weeks. I mean, uh, we've got teachers who are giving up their planning periods to go cover other teachers. Now we're compensating them for that. Um, so I walked into two classrooms today and saw two of our high school teachers teaching in the middle school on their planning periods. You know, we have administrators, I think all three administrators today subbed in classrooms because it's getting really tight. Uh, at Lincoln, we're seeing, uh, administrators subbing in classrooms. Yes, the pandemic's going to be hard. Uh, I also think the teaching. Yes, the pandemic's going to be hard. I also think the teaching profession's taking a big hit lately. And I think you're very aware of that, the market to hire teachers. We've had a number of situations where we put a job application out there and we have one person apply. So it's much like when we're watching Ben's beloved Cincinnati Reds and we say, why, why are you putting that guy on the mound? Because we have no one else to put on. You know, like that's the best that we've got. So the teaching market concerns me greatly in particular, high school level. I mean, it's, it's, it can be real slim pickings at that. So when the pandemic and the teaching market, yeah, very concerned, very concerned. Next question. Notice how I ask that, as if I'm expecting the next question. That's what good teachers, or at least teachers should do, is not say, you know. Please, we need the next question. I'm not going to leave without the next question, Jeff. Then I'll.
This is the hundred and fiftieth class through Dayton schools.
Yeah.
And I think it's something to celebrate. I think you've pulled these schools way up, probably the best shape that they've ever been. I thank you for that.
We have come a long, long way, but I, 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 like I told somebody, I still think we have a few more rabbits to pull out of our hat here. I think the best days are yet to come. You know, and I attribute it to a grade four, a committed staff. For those of you who aren't fully familiar with our story, ten years ago, we were ranked one hundred and seventy-first out of one hundred and seventy-three school districts in the state of Kentucky. We were basically on the two percent contingency that the state required us to have. And we were under KDE control for academics and we had a little FBI investigation with the federal system in attendance. So we feel like we've really come a long, long way. We still have a lot, some, some work to do in some areas. We've got some kids that are coming from some tough situations. But as you can tell, we've got some kids that are flying very high and having some great opportunities to hopefully come back and invest in the community of Dayton. You know, one of the challenges I've seen in Ludlow and other communities is the goal is sometimes becomes successful that you never come back. And we've got to change that narrative. And I think that's what's changing with the housing market and the job opportunities is that we want our top flyers to say, I want to come back. I don't want to live the rest of my days here in Dayton, Kentucky. One more question. Yes.
I know that parents and students at Dayton are really close knit group. And I see sometimes on Facebook ways to contribute. But is the school, there are a lot of people live in Dayton that really are rooting for the schools. And I actually didn't know that it was twenty-five percent poverty rate. Is there a way that people, maybe they don't have kids, but they live in Dayton, or they're empty nesters and can help the school? I know that right now, we can't volunteer, we can't do the reading program like I was going to do because the pandemic came up. But like, you know, you don't want a kid, you might not have a kid there, but you really want to help. How, how would people do that?
PTCs, which are PTOs volunteering in the schools. Our athletic boosters are always looking for folks. We've got a wonderful group that graduated in the sixties that mans our concession stands. And the money that athletic boosters do go back and if you see our kids walking around town in their Letterman jacket, those are all completely free because of the athletic boosters. So every year they provide those to students who qualify not only athletically, but academically. So there's some academic ways that kids can earn those Letterman jackets. So they're, they're a great piece that our boosters do and our kids wear those with pride. And then always donations of time treasured to our family resource center. We have many, many families that hit crisis and a twenty-dollar gift card to, you know, Krover really goes a long way.
Donated to the family resource.
Family Resource Centers is the best. Yes, they are always looking for, you know, those types of resources to support our kids and families with it.
In fact, you'd come join PTC with me and Kim.
That would be awesome.
Okay. And PTC handles like all of your fall festivals, your end of the school year. When we put on Last Day, PTC does all of those events.
Biggest festival ever. It is amazing, the Last Day of School at Lincoln. If you've ever been there. It's a, it's truly a sight to behold.
And we just had to stay in the shop where I actually had to take vacation days just to run it because we do a lot of people. We don't have enough volunteers.
But I volunteered for certain things and Kim has got me in there doing different things. But I think when the pandemic came, it's kind of out of sight, out of mind.
It's really got everybody.
And so how can we do that when we're not, you know, a lot of people are very concerned with going in person and.
Correct. And we're still concerned. You know, we used to do a one-to-one reading program where our high school gateway kids would read with.
I was all signed up and it was March sixteenth, twenty twenty.
So we had to pull the plug on that.
And that was, that was when everything shut down, but I was there. So yeah, I kind of feel bad, like, well, what do we do now?
Jay, I just want to say our schools, our children, our students have been very fortunate that you've been here the last ten years to lead them. And as well, people on the board like Diane Huff and Roseanne Sharon, who have been there to lead with you. And I know you guys have done tremendous work over the past ten years and just thank you.
The best is yet to come and I'm glad you mentioned Roseanne Sharon. If you look over by the flag there, I don't know if you've fully recognized that's a tribute to her. That was the gamble that she used to gamble in all of our Board of Education meetings. So that's a small tribute. And I love the way that you start your meetings with the pledge, just like we do. And it's a little remembrance to me to keep me grounded on what North Star type of things she wanted for our school and community. So I kind of look over there every time we have a meeting and start it, think of Roseanne. Hopefully you guys do as well. So. She's been very much missed, very much missed here. We've got a good team that's, that's pulling together and doing the best we can. So appreciate everything. Again, anything I can do, we grow together. That's always been my motto, you know, that the schools and the city are, are growing together. It's exciting. It's a super exciting time. All the things you're presenting, it's a super exciting time in Dayton. Bet on those green devils to grow. So anything else?
I just want to say when I first took the role as mayor, you and I met for a coffee.
Yeah.
And asked, said, hey, the city and the schools have to work together. And I come from a public education background and how important your organization, how important schools are with the city. And you are a hundred percent correct when you say together we grow. You're doing an amazing job and we are so thankful that you do.
I look back, I look forward to being back here next year. We'd love to do a little update. It won't be quite as long because you guys will be up to speed, but we haven't done anything in a while. So we felt like to go a little bit more in depth. So appreciate the invite.
Take care.
What a great presentation. Thank you so much, Mr. Brewer.
Well, just call me Jay.
All right, Jay. Mr. Brewer is a senile old man living on Stokes A Street.
Just a second for Mr. Paulson to have a seat.
We know what happens in the rest of the.
This is the one time we get to leave early.
He's got it on his computer.
Oh, he does. Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
All right. Next on the agenda, we would like to welcome the esteemed colleague of ours from the city of Bellevue, City Administrator Frank Warnock. He's going to speak with us regarding water retention area that are proposing for the Sergeant Park Stormwater Retention Area. Welcome, Mr. Warnock.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. I appreciate you allowing me to be here this evening. I was in the upper half of the bottom third of my fourth grade class. So I became a lawyer, so there is hope for students that are in the system. I'm not going to give a state of the Bellevue address here tonight, so you're lucky. Your fire chief, or our fire chief, told me that I got to keep it short. The UK gave you what's it? So I moved to Bellevue in the eighties and for as long as I can remember, there has been flooding on Covert Run. And when it rains hard, the water flows from Port Thomas through Dayton, through Campbell County, through Bellevue, down to Newport, down to the Ohio River. And there's a basin on Covert Run that runs along Covert Run and there are multiple, multiple flooding issues. And we have been meeting for the past two years with SD one. And this includes Newport, Dayton, Bellevue, Campbell County, Cindy Minner, Larissa Sims, Michael Geffen, myself, the mayor of Bellevue, Mike Jaeger. And we've been trying to beat our heads against the wall and come up with a solution to the stormwater problems on Covert Run. And it's a multiple jurisdiction issue problem. So we are here to ask that you consider that we could use part of Sergeant Park as a water retention area for a system along Covert Run. I sense that there is some hesitancy on your all's part to do this. I understand that you have this nice park. You refurbished it, you're rejuvenating it, there's some energy there. I've kind of watched it because I live very close to there and it's fantastic what you guys have been doing. But I would like to ask that you at least consider, we've, we've got a brand new, we had a Shady Terrace Mobile Home Park that was beat up and had fifteen or so mobile home parks there that were very dilapidated. And now we're going to have seventy-four new single, single-family homes going in there. And we're trying to do what we can to be helpful. There are two parcels of property adjacent to that development site. And we have committed to purchasing those properties to create a water retention or detention system there at substantial cost to the city of Bellevue. And the more that we can do to capture the water flow before it flows onto Covert Run, the better we will be. So I will turn it over to our city engineer, your city engineer, Mike Jaeger. He can give you some technical information about what we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Good evening. Terrif, you want to run the video? I think everyone's familiar with the area, but it's just, every time you see this, it's just crazy to think how much water's coming down this road. And so Frank mentioned we've been meeting and working as a group to try to figure out a way to alleviate this. And with that much water, there's not one single thing you can do to catch that much water. And so we're trying to come at this from a multitude of different angles. And so, Terrif, you want to go to the next, just a. So, starting from the top going down the bottom, obviously all the water is going to run down the hill. And so the worst part of the flooding hasn't, if you get down close to Taylor every one time, it's fifteen to twenty hours. I'm going to walk over and point to the screen too. So this is just an aerial view of overrun. And then to get everybody to run text Sergeant Parks at the top. And then as you come all the way down, you're close to Taylor. And so the different ideas that we've come up with, the work in Sergeant Park is one. And so trying to catch as much water there as we can. But Frank mentioned we've got the Shady Terrace Mobile Home Park. So with that development, they had to design a detention basin on their own just to capture the water runoff from their site. But what he's talking about is these two homes that are adjacent to the site also. The city's got a contract for refusal to buy those and tear those down and build an additional detention basin that would help collect water from Covert Run itself in addition to what's happening at the Mobile Home Park. All the water comes down at the bottom of the hill, this creek runs through the back and, and this is a significant flooding area. So a lot of these homes during the heavy rain events, the water comes up and actually floods and gets in into the homes. So as we are with Dayton, we've been really active with grants in Bellevue too. So this last round of OKI grants cycles, we, we applied for a, it was a sidewalk project, but we included stormwater mitigation work in that as well. And so what that looked like was right now, there's no curb and gutter, everything just flows into that creek. The scope included sidewalk running from the new development all the way down and tying into the existing sidewalk at the bottom. And with that curb and gutter and sidewalk, there would be actually new detention basins and inlets that would catch the water also. There'd also be sidewalk that runs, this is a heavy pedestrian access point for grant development. And so there's, right now, there's, we're finishing up design to fill in the missing pieces of sidewalk here. But it also included sidewalk on the other side of Covert Run also. So we unfortunately did not get that grant. There was another round of LPA grants that went through the KYTC that we applied for. And so we're still waiting to hear back if we got that or not. But every time that we talk in Bellevue about potential projects, grants, what is a priority, Covert Run, and trying to alleviate this flooding issue is, is the top of the list. So now there's the SD one fifty-fifty grant application that they have the public cost share. And so the next project that we have on our agenda is to apply for that. And so it's definitely going to include the cost to acquire these two properties and tear them down and build a, a new basin. It's going to include the, the curb and gutter and inlet system. And then what we're going to talk about today is whether or not there is any opportunity to do work in Sergeant Park as an additional component of that grant. And so let me go to the next. This is just kind of a real quick idea to give you an idea. These are the two houses that we're talking about. And it also just shows that there's no curb and gutter now. So that just gives you an idea of what the scope of that project will look like. Could actually build that up, have a curb, a buffer and sidewalk all the way through. And that will go from, again, from the Mobile Home Park where that was the new development down to the bottom. So Sergeant Park, we were asked to take a look and see just what, what could happen in Sergeant Park. And from the beginning, as Frank mentioned, the city of Bellevue wants to make sure that there's no major negative impacts on the park itself. That's, that's been a key component of this from the start. And so there are engineers with our firm that are much more intelligent than I am that deal with these basins, design those on a regular basis. And so in our Lexington group, they started with the assignment and came back with the basin that's labeled A on the map. And so that's just following contours. It's the easiest, most beneficial spot for it. It seemed like it's out of the way. They did not have a lot of context about what all was going on in the park when that was done, but that's where it all started. We sent that into SD one to just kind of get some preliminary feedback. And so with that and just with the magnitude of the water, they asked us to go back and take another look and see if there's even any other opportunities to get additional basins in the park besides just the one that's labeled A. And so with that, came back and that's where C came from, can actually get more benefit if we build those. But obviously they're, they're closer to the road and would, could have a bigger impact on what's going on in the park. And so that was the beginning of what we've looked at. And I think we're just here today to figure out if this is viable at all. If it's not, is there opportunity somewhere else in the park that we should be looking at? And then answer questions and just like Frank said, begin the conversations and see where we go from there.
So where specifically are these in relationship to the park? So.
Thank you. That's the parking lot.
This is the parking lot right here?
Yes. So this is coming down the hill and this is the parking lot.
So this would be above the parking lot?
That's correct.
Yeah.
So what you see is this, it's basically these pink areas or colored areas would be similar to building a dam. We build that up where it basically utilizes existing contours where there's low spots to just build up and hold the water back until the system can catch up. And then the water can be slowly really streaming. And right now, where we see it, it's torrential downpour. You've got the miniature river coming down.
And this towards where the creek runs through here.
That's, that's the bottom side of the park.
Yes, okay. And then this. Just trying to get my bearings here. Is that where that big flat area is?
So it gets, yeah, so it's flatter. So the contours are kind of hard to see. So the green are every, the green is every ten, it's a ten-foot contour. And then you've got your smaller yellow lines that are in between there that are over two feet.
Where are the basins?
So these are the basins, what's outlined in the, in the color. So that's what that would look like. So it's, it's. So it's, it's basically you would build this up, but it would utilize existing ground on the outside to hold the water.
The blue one and the two black ones?
The blue one and the two black ones, right.
And, and the pink areas where the flat area is sort of by the, the picnic area?
So this would be to basically build up and build a dam.
Kind of a what?
It was right behind that enough as well.
Pink areas more like.
It's a kind of a, yeah.
Like a field on it, yeah.
Yes, kind of field, right.
That's for the dam, the, the pink area there.
The pink areas where you actually build all, build up and create the dam to hold the water back. So one thing I did not mention is that we did look to see if this, so these would be detention basins. And so they typically, what those are, they're dry other than when there's a heavy rain event. And so they only fill up if there's a heavy rain event and then that water slowly dissipates and it goes back to being a dry basin. We did look at retention basins, which is full time. There's water in those all the time. You don't get quite the benefit out of those. And then you get into issues with the dam safety and you've got to get into all these other regulations just to make sure that that dam does not break and then create unexpected flooding downstream. So we did look at that. It's a lot more costly and the benefits wasn't as, as good as what you would see here with a detention basin.
Is that the suggestion they have that you don't with fishing like or something?
Yeah, so that's why if you had water in there all the time, it would give you opportunity for it to be part of the park and you could have recreation activities and fishing.
Yeah, liability though.
The liability, just the upfront cost and the liners and everything and just the regulations at the core is, I think it's true.
So which one of those are the most beneficial?
Our initial recommendation was just to do the, the one at A.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that going to wipe out that field?
Yeah.
So on the option A, is the vision that the, are there streams that are coming down from there that is going to be filling that in? Or is it that the stormwater is just coming down the whole entire hillside? Like as a sheet and we're only trying to, you're trying to catch a little bit of it?
Yes, you can kind of follow the contours here. So there's a path that comes down pretty much straight to the middle where that is.
So right now it's like option A, B, or C?
What's the size, what's the size of that basin? Okay.
So, so now that's, so the, so a hundred eighty-three cubic feet. That's the volume, that's the total, let's see, sorry. I should have got that off the top of my head. Basically four thousand seven hundred cubic yard is what the total is. So the top of the, the top of the dam, ten feet, that gives you an idea of what that is. I can't scale it all, but I don't see where it actually has a size on here. Acre, acre here, seven acres. Is that right? How big is the total?
That sounds big.
It sounds too big.
That sounds too big.
Michael, is there anything in the, the park agreement itself that we would have to consider for, you know, for doing these sorts of projects in, within the park?
There are some conditions in the trust and I need to look at that to see whether it would be, whether there would be prohibition. But I don't, I don't know if the answer to that question is going to be.
Oh, I just want to clarify, you are either, we're picking one or we're kind of focusing on picking one eventually?
I don't know that we're, I think it's just to start the conversation to see if any of the three are viable. If, if these three aren't viable, if there's another location that we should look at. But yeah, so I don't, I don't know that it's.
When I go to the park?
I think it's just to have the conversation.
There's a very large pipe on the Bellevue side of that park where it opens up and then it runs underneath driveways and then it opens back up into an open creek. And the reason that the homeowners there did that, they paid for that, not the city, not the county. The private, property homeowners did that was because of the flooding that was coming out of that creek and the park.
Does that create a pinch point though? Because of the, those pipes, does that create a pinch point there that creates flooding behind it?
I can't say that's true or not. I know that when it rains hard, a large volume of water runs through that pipe underneath those driveways into the open area. And the flooding that you saw is like the third house down from the Dayton line on the, on the same side of the street. And literally the height of that flooding was, I don't know, two, three feet. It took his mailbox out, it took a lot of shrubbery out and things like that. You could drive through it. So this is just an effort to do something, to do a global fix. Something's got to be done and.
What about something in the new parking lot? As a retention area in the new parking lot? Dig down the new parking lot?
That may be the answer, I don't know. I, I turn to the engineers for those answers to those questions, I'm not competent.
Yeah, I'm on the park board and I just hate to see us giving out that much area of a park.
You're talking about creating an underground stores, like a little park on, building that area up?
I don't know if the cost would be prohibitive.
I mean, I agree with not touching the park, but unfortunately Dayton would have to do their part to stop some of that water.
Well. I'm not necessarily vehemently opposed to looking at some of this, but what really would help for me to visualize some of this is to go up there and look at where, you know, this area would be and kind of stick it off. I mean, that would, that would really give me more of an insight as to what's involved.
I agree, that's a very reasonable request and we could, we could make that happen.
Mr. Warnock?
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure we're all on the same page. What you're asking for tonight is to see if the city of Dayton and the city of Dayton park board is just wanting to have the conversation?
Yes, and conceptually, you know, we're always up in this and hopeful and we're all, you know, full speed ahead. We were going to try and get this to the SD one board this month. But, you know, you guys have questions and, and we could delay that effort. Assuming we could get you guys up there to take a look and then you could give us a yes or a no, or maybe, you know, give us more input.
I, I certainly don't think that, I'm speaking on behalf of the park board, so correct me if I'm wrong, that we will need a little bit of time to, to consider these options and give everybody a chance to, to walk the grounds and see what this, what this is. But I, I certainly imagine that we're open for the conversation.
We spent, that's good, so that's great. So we've spent like a year and a half to get SD one on board with this concept, just so you know. And now, now we're trying to take it to the next level.
Perfect.
Yeah. Mayor Haas of Fort Thomas has indicated he's willing to do what would be acceptable from an engineering point of view as far as Fort Thomas is concerned. Do you have a? Sorry.
Very good question.
Go ahead.
Are you asking for a water retention in this area? Are you, what is the actual structure proposed?
I'll, I'll allow Mike Yeager to explain that. I think Mike might need to get closer to it so I can hear him.
So it's not actually retention, so retention would, it's just the way it's worded. But retention would actually hold water constantly. So this would just be a detention structure, so only during heavy rain events it would hold back water while there's heavy rain going on and then it would slowly dissipate once the system catch up. So what you see on the screen, these pinkish areas would be a fill area, it'd be a big mound. It's essentially a small dam that would hold that water back. And then there would be piping structures at certain elevations that would allow the water to slowly leave the basin as, as the storm died down. So, so these would not be wet a hundred percent of the time. That would just be a dry basin except during heavy rain events.
Mike, would they be, would the basins look natural? Would they have to be flat and grass or aladines?
So at the top, it's like ten feet and then just a three to one slope going down?
I mean, naturally the water backs up into is, I mean, would it look like a natural, would it still look like a stream? It'd normally be the stream nor- normally and then just it would back up through a rain event?
That's correct, yes.
I was going to say, are we able to get a picture of what it would look like? Cause I can't visualize, you know, what these basins are.
So we did a few in Covington that aren't exactly the same as this, but there are a series of early diesel burning areas of basin. So if you come down Highland Avenue and then going up to Point Benton. So there's some in the area that you can see. And then you can, those are really highly visible from the road. And so they put some natural plantings in there and try to make them look nicer. So there's, there's things you can do with them to make them aesthetically pleasing, not just, it doesn't look like a giant crater.
So does it, do we excavate to then build the dam? So the exterior of that would be the excavation to create the dam for the water, the ground that you're talking about?
Yeah, so where you build this up, it actually matches the contour here. So there's not a lot of excavation that has to happen inside. So it's already.
Who would pay for, for construction on this?
Well, we'd have to have a conversation, but we're hoping we can use our COVID money. We got seven hundred and forty thousand in for stormwater infrastructure. And we've got a commitment for a recommendation to the SD one board for a fifty fifty match.
So that would be Bellevue's?
Yes.
Okay. The second question I have pertains to public works and the park board and its health. Who is responsible for maintaining these coves and keeping them cleaned out? And, you know, twenty, even with area A, twenty years from now, there's going to be growth in there, much like we see up Covert Run.
It's not twenty years.
Yeah.
They, they clean ours out all the time.
At a river point.
Who would be responsible for maintaining that amount of retention there? Would that fall on the city of Dayton because it is city of Dayton property or SD one?
We would have to have that discussion with SD one to figure that out.
I, I would say our, our detention, whatever point is cleansed out annually.
Mike, who does that?
Well, our, our landscaping people do. We pay them to do it, but they, they do it annually. So because what you do is you get growth, once, once it's developed, you get growth in there. You know, just like natural grass or whatever. And, you know, you've got some of the weeds get overgrown and cause, so they go in there and they just, you know, weed whack them out and pull all the stuff out. And then the water naturally brings debris in as well. So annually they go out and do it.
My experience has been with these fifty fifty programs is that SD one will take care of major issues with the basin. So if, say, for example, the dam failed, that would be something that SD one would do. But day to day maintenance, if there's debris and things like that, that would fall back on the city. And then I think that'd be a conversation, if this is something that Bellevue would take care of since it's a Bellevue project or Dayton. I don't know how that would work, but the, the major stuff would be handled by SD one and the more day to day routine stuff would be, they'd be looking for that the city to take care of that.
Yeah, you know, what Jess said before, you know, doing our part to stop some of this water flow, I'm not opposed to that. I'm just speaking for myself, but I'm also, you know, I'm concerned at how that would impact the park itself. And then maintenance issues and those kinds of things. But, and to see it, to go up and look at the area and, you know, that would help a lot. But certainly willing to discuss the issue.
Just to clarify, you want to pick one of these sites to do this basin? Or you want all three of them? You want one?
So I guess the answer is the more you do, the better. So the more you do, the bigger the impact. But I don't, I don't know that there's a specific ask. I think, I think the city would just, Bellevue would just.
We were told the more area that you could capture, the better it would be to manage the stormwater. And they actually did some studies to look at that.
So they have a giant stormwater model that isn't just of Covert Run, but they've got regional models and they can plug all of this information in and figure out what the benefit is downstream and so on. So they, SD one has done that. They've hired a firm to come in and do that. So they've got really high level numbers of what kind of impact each term would have.
So are we consulting with like the park board on what their vision is for that park? So that we are kind of going for areas and?
We haven't yet and I think that's what, I think that's why we're here is to figure out. Go along to like if there's certain areas that these are all.
Where's the bridge?
Bridge?
Off, off the parking lot.
It's in the parking lot.
Okay.
Right there.
So there's a little stream, there's a bridge, and then there's like the picnic area over there. Okay. And then that's that field. Like in my opinion, I've been there many times, but I think that's the, I love that area. That, that field is like the nicest area like we ever, you know, at some point did some kind of fair or something. That ties right in because you can have like the cookout or whatever and then the kids can run, it's all flat. It's really a nice, I would think that would be a terrible, I mean, to get rid of that area, you know? And then this, I don't know, is it all like woods right here?
That's above on the other side of the parking lot.
Yeah, I don't know what's there. I mean, I just, I go on the bridge, so like is it all?
The only concern I would have about that one, I'd say that's probably the least used area of the park. Is it, would it not be?
So far, but we've been developing it as a surrounding yard.
Oh.
Okay.
I actually think that one to the left probably is least used. It's along the creek there.
What is that?
Right, right here, there's some trails, apparently has some trails to it.
I, I think what we're doing right now is.
You just need to go walk.
Yeah, I think what we're doing right now is great. We've, we've all got concerns, we've all got ideas. And I, I think, you know, there's a lot of different facets that we have to look at this. There's, there's some legal implications as far as the bylaws that were laid forth in the, in the park designation. We have maintenance concerns, you know, us, you, SD one. Maybe it's a triumvirate of all three. The overall footprint of the project, you know, that's certainly a concern. With, with the original idea of coming here and, and asking, are we willing to speak about it? Are we willing to have the conversation? I, I don't want to speak for the park board, but I, I think, yes, we are willing to. Are we willing to make a decision within a month? I, I don't, I don't think that's prudent. Just because of how, how much effort we put into this park and how much it means to the city. And, but, but let's, let's have the ongoing conversation.
All, all of those things that you said are reasonable, so.
And we need that, Frank, we're, we're super excited to work with Bellevue and your projects and the betterment of the new region.
So we'll have our bowling contest and when Bellevue wins.
You don't want that. How'd that bobby thing work out?
Not so good.
Always thanks here, my friend.
So we'll do more homework, we'll report back, we'll reengage. And at least tonight we know that you have expressed some interest.
Yeah, let's put a meeting on the books next week or so to, to have the, the, the park board, the city, y'all get together and, and have a walkabout, whatever, take the next steps and we're excited about that.
I appreciate you allowing this amount of time for this subject.
Appreciate it, sir, anytime. Thank you very much, Mr. Warnock. And, Frank. Next up, as I mentioned in the state of the city address, transparency, communication, how are we doing that? Well, one of the big ways that we're doing that is a brand new website. And city staff has worked diligently with our web developer in the past six months on developing a new website so we can get communication out to everybody quicker and more efficiently and clearer. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Jared and Jay to do a quick presentation. I think Jared might need a technical. On, on our new website, which is www.datenky dot com.
I'm hungry.
I'm having a dinner.
I'm done. It's that simple.
I know.
I'm getting the part where he's angry instead of hungry, so it's time for me to.
Right, right.
Besides, I've seen. Thank you for all you do, and thank you for being receptive to our things. So far, so good.
Frank, where'd he gotta win? Where'd he gotta win on the L O?
There, yeah.
We're gonna have a five-minute reset of the, uh, fix the technology.
Change out about.
Did great job, Scott.
There's no mural on this one.
Yeah, I can do a better one.
You say you share a better one? See, if the one is, no. No, you don't need it.
That's totally up to you.
No, that's fine. That's probably what it's called, huh? Get it out of there. We're loving where you are.
Oh, my gosh. No comment.
This is Donna and.
Okay.
We're just.
No, I read your. His response.
Why don't you just go out there?
Bye.
Thank you.
Sorry, they ran some.
All right, recess is adjourned. I'd like to have a court, uh, city administrator Fawcett, who will give us a quick introduction.
Yeah, so when we did our strategic planning process last spring, city councilmen are very clear that, uh, they wanted a new website, and for good reason. We had a website that was outdated, very clunky, we couldn't do a lot with it because of its age and just its design. And so one of our priorities in helping get the city, having the city have more information, external communications, was to have the website serving as the center of the, basically, the nucleus of all our communications. So, um, Jared's gonna go over the details of it, but I wanted to give a little bit of background. We aren't able to use, for some reason, the wireless connection here, so it's being, uh, connected to the internet through a phone, which is, and like, and so what you're seeing is not exactly what you're gonna see on your screen. It's been expanded on this TV screen, so it's a little bit out of source, but it will give you an idea of what it, what provides. And when you get on your computer at home or on your phone, and it's also a mobile accessible website, so you can see it on a phone, an iPad, or your computer, uh, or your TV. So, uh, anyway, I just wanted to give a little background before Jared kinda got into the details. We've worked on this for about six months, uh, we've added about fifty new pages, uh, we've written a lot of new content. We had a lot more photos than we had in the past, and we, uh, we are pretty excited about showing this off tonight. So Jared, why don't you take it from here?
Okay, so I'm gonna be a bit awkward because I'm using my trackpad down here to do the math up here. Look at my notes, talk to you and it's the microphone at the same time. So like Jay said, we've worked on, I think, the first week that I got here, we met with the website developer that we, and we've been working on continually ever since, and particularly in the last probably five weeks. Every day we've been working on this website to try to make it what it is now.
And, uh, real quick, before you get into it, I also want to thank Scott Mesler, council member Mesler. This, this drill video is the one you're seeing now. There's also a lot of great photography that he was kind enough to share with us that is included in this website, so I just want to let you know that ahead of time. You're gonna see a lot of stuff that Scott's any work, he was kind enough to let us use those photos in this video.
So the priorities that we had with this particular site was we wanted to update the look, but also there was lots of content that was outdated as well. And we wanted to create better access for the community, and over the months that I've been here, I've heard lots of different complaints from different people concerning the website and what they want it to be, so we tried to do the best we could to make all of that happen. So this particular website, more so than the other one, is very graphically driven. We have lots of photos in it. That way we can change it out over time and keep it fresh and modern, and kinda change the look of it, and so it doesn't seem stale.
Show the other slider for, for, just for the, so this is one of four sliders at the top of the, there's a little arrow there that you can show the other ones. This is a long video, so it stays on for a while. The other one's quite a curve, so. Again, there's that little headline at the right, it would be small, it would be much larger on your computer, just talk about the, uh, it's our parks. You click on that, you go to our parks page, you click on this one, next one here, and it goes to the history page, which is, I had fun writing that, it was pretty interesting about the history of Dayton. So each of these sliders actually send you to another page inside. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, we also wanted it to be easy to use, and we also wanted, uh, the community to be able to request city services completely online without having to call the city building or having them, because especially during COVID times, people wanna do everything over the internet. Um, in this particular website, we, Jay and I created forty-one pages from scratch, and.
We wrote all the other ones.
We only carried over twelve from the old site, so it's pretty much a brand new website. Uh, and we've also utilized this kind of branding, the font, the icons, uh, the colors specifically, and all of our other graphics and flyers, so we have a cohesive look, uh, on all the documentation that the city put down. So on the homepage, uh, I have a list here of all pages of what I wanted to talk about, but if you have any particular questions on any thing, just let me know. Uh, the homepage, we have lots of links here visible for ease of use. We have all of these menus here at the top, if I can make it up there, and they're organized by residents, visitors, uh, businesses, and governments. And then as you go down, you're gonna have these other call-out buttons that we can change if we want to. Uh, and then below that is going to be your calendar here to the right, and then the city news section, which is here still left. It also, uh, allows people to sign up for the newsletter here below, and a new capability is that they, a citizen or a group can request to add something to our calendar.
Fantastic.
We also can have these alerts here, so we have one saying Mayor Baker is giving his state of the city address. We also have the capability of having a, an alert come up here at the bar at the top if we want a message to get out quickly. So I know the calendar is a particular hotspot for many people, so we'll go there first. This is the new calendar, which looks way better than the old one. It actually fits on the page, which is nice.
You've got Saturday on it.
We had, uh, we worked with this very kind of minimalist design, uh, that was easy to see. We can color code things. Uh, we can do repeat, repeating dates, so the city council meeting is always on the same Tuesday, so it makes it much easier in the background. I know other people probably don't find that as interesting, but it makes it way easier for us to handle. So if you click on a page, which I know this is skewed, but it's cause we're being stretched out here. Uh, this is the city council meeting that we're at right now. You can download a PDF of the agenda. You can see the agenda here, and as you scroll down to the bottom, you can click this button, and it will automatically add it to your Google Calendar on your phone and notify you when the meeting is. So lots of capabilities here, um, and good use for people.
Will it stay there then? If someone wanted to scroll back four months, will they be able to look at the agenda? Will the minutes be attached to that also?
No, and we're gonna get to that, where that's located. So next up here at the top is now we're gonna have the capability, we don't, as of today, but we are working on it, where you can pay your property tax online. So they don't have to come into the office. Um, the next section is going to be city news here, and this is, um, kind of gonna work in tandem with the e-newsletter. What we're going to do is we're gonna write the stories on the website, and when the newsletter gets sent out, it's just gonna be a link to the website to drive traffic back to the website. And it's set up in this blog style, which, of course, everything is skewed differently than what it would be. This picture wouldn't be as large, and that middle part would be larger, of course. Another interesting thing that we did, uh, we kinda copied Covington with this page. It's the city maps page. And Covington has a lot of different data that they're sharing with their community, so we wanted to do something similar. So I created some maps that would just be of use to the community. So this first one is gonna be all the tank, the tank routes, the bus, and where all the stops are. Next is gonna be the zoning map that they can look at, garbage pickup zones. Every sidewalk in the city is mapped here. Uh, our historic district overlay is here, all the city properties, parks, and they're all color coded. And show you where the boundaries are, and then at the very bottom are all the rental properties that are in the city. So the next one at the top is going to be the contact us page. And this is how people are gonna get in touch with city staff or the council. Um, and you can, the interesting thing about this is that you can group it by department, so if you want just city council members, you can click on that, and it's just gonna pull them up specifically. If you click on someone's name, we'll do Councilman's Eleven, her photos there, her files there, and all of her information. So next I'm gonna go to the about us, and some of these pages are the same, so I'm just gonna skip over them. Um, and we'll go to city boards, cause I know that was the point, that people had one change. We now have all the listed members, what the duties are, what the data needs are, and the locations for each one. So they can go and look up where any meeting is being held, and who are the members on that particular board. Let's see, so next I'm gonna go to city departments. This is a whole new page. And it's gonna have each department and kind of a description of what they do. We'll go to police department, and it's gonna list the employees, and in each section, uh, each department, rather, we're gonna have this section called how can we help? And you're gonna be able to request services online for each department. So for example, the police department is gonna have an anonymous tick line, request a vacation check, where if you go on vacation, the police can come and check on your home. And then request a welfare check for, for another individual. So what these will do, they pull up a form, and you fill this out. When you submit it, it's going to send an email with all of your information to the department head of whatever department that you're requesting work from. So that's police department, for example, um, you can go to, uh, I don't want too far back. City clerk's office, for example, it's gonna show you all the services that they have, what their location is, and then you could request, like, an open records request from their department. Are there any questions so far? No?
I have a question. Rode the boards, and then who's on the boards? How are they, uh, letting you know when their meetings are now? Like I said, is, have you set that up to where they're gonna let you know, and you're gonna order them to the city calendar, or is it hooked up and so?
They should have a regular meeting date, unless it's something like Board of Adjustments that only meet as needed, they're gonna have a regular meeting date. So the calendar has that built in through perpetuity. It's gonna keep that date forever. Um, so if it's, for example, the city council meeting is the second Tuesday, every month on the second Tuesday, it's gonna have a city council meeting or it's located.
We, we have to leave for chair, they're not gonna have any let us know, that we put on there that.
Sure, sure, sure.
But they have to tell us if that's not gonna happen. Generally, we know, but often we don't, they need to let us know.
Yeah.
Right.
And we will indicate it's canceled if that, as soon as they tell us that that's the case.
Thanks.
Is that where this, is that the only access to the city ordinance system?
No.
Okay.
So another thing that I was very, um, that I wanted to do was there are multiple ways to get to these pages from a lot of different directions. So there's a lot of interconnections, which took a long time for us to do, is you have to link everything together. So for example, you can do city ordinance here, and then we'll, we'll get to some other pages where that is gonna be sent as well. Uh, the last one that I wanna do in the about us is dating history, which I think in the old website, it was just a paragraph maybe, that Jay has went through and pretty much gave us a, a whole book when it comes to dating history. So that's much nicer than it was prior. Let's do this, uh, historic preservation page is new to the site. Um, it's gonna have a map of the historical district, how you do your certificate of properness. Um, it's gonna have a map of the historical district, how you do your certificate of properness, what are the laws. And then this was available on the old site, so, I mean, I, I'm not really sure how people even had access to that information unless they knew to go to city hall, so we've had instances since I've been here where people just didn't know that they were supposed to do anything, but there was no access to information. So we're hoping that this new site will, uh, prevent that from happening. Um, we have a parks and rec page, which is gonna have all the different parks, and, uh, you can click on each one of those for information. Um, another neat thing, and I carry this over from the Morgantown website that I worked on previously, we have this as well, and it's available properties. So we can work with real estate developers, and they can advertise on our website, and we can promote, uh, commercial spaces that are for sale. So in particular, we have this one, I just called a Realtor, I saw the side of the window, called him and said, hey, can I have this on the website, is it true, he's sending me the information, it took me five minutes today.
Is that only for commercial properties or residential?
We're only doing commercial.
Yeah, I think we'd be able to, well, residential, it changes so quickly, it wouldn't be hard to stay.
Right, and it's, it's hard to keep track of that. We also have the new dating business assistant grant, which is on your agenda tonight, it's gonna have all the information there. Uh, and then they can download the application and fill it online and send it to us, versus having to do a paper form. We also have
So they can fill it out there and hit submit?
Yes.
Okay. Now just print it out.
Correct, and I mean, the only challenge with online forms is that you don't have a live signature, but if they're approved, you'll have to do a contract, they'll sign it in.
Cool.
City zoning has its own page, which wasn't present at the, um, former website, it's gonna have all the zoning information, if they need to contact, since that's kind of a, we don't do that in-house. Um, visitors, we have a public transportation and parking, so they can figure out where our parking lots are, where the routes are for tank. Um, and it has the times of the routes here. Um, and then to answer your question before, where, where were the minutes located, they go up here to city council meetings. This particular page is going to have a description of where it's located, what time, the latest meeting will always appear here. They can also go to this button, it'll take them to the YouTube page where they can see all the others. The minutes and agendas are gonna be listed here, if they want to see more, they can click here. This button allows them to request to be, uh, added to the agenda if they want to be. Of course, the city council members are all listed here, and then a map showing the location of the meet. Lastly, I wanted to, so obviously, there's a lot of different capabilities, and like you were saying, they're kind of spread out in different ways, and how do you drill down to them, how do you get down to them, so I created this, uh, sorry. This resident services button here, and it's gonna pull up all of those departments and what they could request, all on one page. So if they just wanna quickly find it, they can just come to this page.
True. And then down below, the site map helps you find where you want to go.
Yeah, you can always have this down here where you can find more quickly, rather than going through all the menus. Were there any questions, comments, or concerns?
Oh, fantastic.
It is fantastic. I'm so excited to see this, since I haven't heard it, this has been a long time coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Parks and Mr. Fawcett. Great work. Communication is key, and, uh, it's part of what we do. Moving right along. I got a motion to accept the minutes from December seventh, twenty twenty. So the revolts are moved, do I have a second?
Aye.
Ladies first, Member Kelly made the second, all favorites.
Aye.
Aye.
And Dave. All right, looking out there on the vantage, we had this evening, I would now like to open up the, uh, podium for anyone from, uh, the audience regarding any legislation appearing on tonight's agenda. Anyone? Bueller? All right, moving right along. To ordinances and order resolution, uh, this is second reading, uh, number twenty, twenty-one, number two-one, amending section one-one-one, number one-six of the code of ordinances to change the registration requirements for employees who work in establishments that serve alcohol. Do I have a motion to accept second reading of twenty, twenty-one, number two-one? So move. Revolts are moved, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by number nine, Nina, I'll get it one of these days, I have it. Any comments regarding this, uh, ordinance? I'm gonna close, comments in three, two, and it's closed, I have a roll call, please, Ms. Ledger.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Lovins?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neenan?
Aye.
Hundred percent, ayes have it. So moved. Uh, second on the agenda is order resolution two-zero-two-two-one, number one Romeo, changing the name of the Commercial Community Advantage Program, CCAP program, to the Dating Business Assistance Program, uh, in amending the grant award policies for this program. Do I have a motion to accept resolution number two, year two-two, number one Romeo? So move. Member Neary is moved, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Aye.
Ladies first, man's got. Member Lovins has a second. Uh, do you have any comments regarding two-zero-two-two-one, number one Romeo?
I wonder if we could just get like a little snapshot of, uh, you know, the changing of the name, and then, you know, the, you know, like big changes in here, just so, you know, folks that aren't reading it have an idea of.
Yeah, sure, I remember Fawcett, Mr. Fawcett.
So what we've done, um, is that we kind of focused this a little bit more on our downtown, we kind of go through it. Change, there are three main programs here. One is the facade improvement program. In, in the past, uh, there was kind of an unlimited amount of money that you could get for facades, and also allowed you to do stuff inside the building. We're just focusing on the facades now, and it's up to ten thousand dollars for one half of, they have to have
Whichever is less.
Right.
Up to ten thousand, it's a fifty-fifty match.
So, um, that's the primary change there. Um, but there were, much of the changes in terms of, let me, let me get to it. You know, basically, that they have to pay all property taxes, fines, any licenses must be current, you know, family, immediate family members cannot be rented to. Um, and then there's callback provisions, uh, that if they, you know, don't, don't continue to, um, dispay the programs and get some of the money back. And what else, we've got the rental maintenance program. Um, again, that is pretty much the same, except we are requiring now that they provide us a copy of the check, the rental check, uh, before they get reimbursed, so we are insured that they are in fact, uh, paying rent, and, uh, then they get compensation for that portion, proportion of that. We also changed the, uh, benefits, it's fifty percent of rent up to five thousand dollars in year one. It's twenty-five percent of rent up to twenty-five hundred dollars per year in two, year two, and it's ten percent of rent, uh, in year three, up to one thousand dollars. So the whole idea is, we, we have a pot of money that is, is coming from, so we're trying to make sure that we spread that out a little bit. And we also, again, want them, you know, by this time, uh, they should be on their own. Uh, we don't want to keep on supporting businesses that aren't going to be successful, uh, just because we're supporting them. So, uh, the idea is to get them started, support them, and then after three years, they're pretty much on their own. And then the final one. Let me get to it. Which one did I forget? Signage. What are the main changes we made to signage, um?
It, we required a match, which we did in prior.
Right, they have to be involved, they have to have money in the game on that one too, so they have to match us, uh, up to a certain amount.
Right. It's fifty, I think.
Yeah, right. So that was not the case before. So I think we're at the point now in the city with our businesses that we don't need to do cuts. I mean, maybe five years ago, ten years ago, we probably needed to generate more energy, and I think we're already on the theme tonight, and the mayor's statement, already kind of getting that energy down. I think we can pull back, that will allow us to use these monies for a longer period of time, helping these businesses. Is that good? I also want to thank, uh, Councilmember Neary and Councilmember Kelly for their input, they, they had a lot of great, uh, good changes, uh, in this process, so we'll thank you both for, for your input on that.
Thank you.
You have an excellent overview, thank you very much, Mr. Fawcett. Do you have any other questions or comments regarding two-zero-two-two, number two Romeo? I'm sorry, number one Romeo. And just to clarify, us adopting this today does not affect the terms of the CCAP. Correct. The resources are already in place. They may grandfather this moving forward.
That is correct.
Understood, thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
That is correct.
Any other comments? We will close the comments in three, two, and the comments are closed, I have a roll call, please, Ms. Ledger.
Member Lovins?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neenan?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
You unanimously accepted, the ayes have it. No more CCAP. DBA. DBA. Um, CCAP is very successful, DBA is, uh, gonna be equally successful. Uh, next on the agenda is order resolution number twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two, number two Romeo. Uh, this is accepting the resignations of Amanda Bowman from the park board, and Tanner Yess from the planning and zoning commission, and then appointing Mr. Yess to the park board. Do I have a motion to accept number twenty, twenty-two, number two Romeo? So move. Member Neary's moved, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Member Kelly's second. Any other comments regarding, uh, the programs? I'd like to thank the individuals for their service.
I'd like to thank Amanda Bowman, she's been doing this for four years, she's done an absolutely amazing job.
Any comments? I, I too wanted to, to thank, uh, Amanda especially, Tanner moving on to a different board. Amanda, we look at Sergeant Park and, you know, big portion of why we had that success is because of her dedication. Thanks, Amanda, best of luck in, in, uh, the Port Union Department. Uh, roll call, please, Ms. Ledger.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neenan?
Aye.
Aye.
Member Lovins?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Moving right along, number twenty, twenty-two, number three Romeo, it's a resolution to honor Kentucky communities for fifty years of service in Commonwealth Kentucky. Anything to read about that?
Not really, I mean, we don't need to read the whole thing, but the resolution entities have been in the state for fifty years, and, um, they asked some of the cities to support them in doing this resolution, and they're giving it to me, and we put it on the agenda.
And test, do I have a motion to accept twenty-two, number three Romeo?
Motion to accept.
Member Neenan?
I'll second.
Second, Member Neary. Any comments? Roll call, please, Ms. Ledger.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neenan?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Lovins?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Member Basler?
Aye, sorry.
No worries. Ayes have it, yes. Thank you, Kentucky communities, for your work. Uh, the next one, uh, is a little back work. Uh, we, uh, are authorizing and ratifying the payment of a hundred dollars for holiday compensation for, uh, our city employees from, uh, the most recent Christmas hot, uh, holidays. Uh, so we, we gave everybody a hundred dollar check, uh, which came out of the budget, typically we put this, uh, in December's agenda. I just wanted to make sure that, uh, this is approved by council. Do I have a motion to accept twenty, twenty-two, number four Romeo? So move. Member Volter is moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Neenan, do I have any comments? Roll call, please, Ms. Ledger.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neenan?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Lovins?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
And last on the order resolutions for, uh, this month's agenda, twenty, twenty-two, number five Romeo, is accepting the third unit bid of Indy Construction Incorporated for future concrete work within the city of Dayton. Uh, and this will be for the Dayton Mike.
Well, not necessarily, that will probably be bid, that's through the state, uh, state, uh, government process. This will be for any kind of projects we have in the city, whether it's a small, uh, curb, construction, or sidewalks. So what this does is, they have the set price. We don't accept this price, we could go with Wiseman, if Wiseman's cheaper. Uh, we, we'll get probably several bids anyway, but this is the set price, it'll probably be one of the cheaper ones. They bid with three other, or two other, uh, contractors, and so this was the lowest and best price, so, um, it's there, we can use it when we need it, but it's also, they're committed to this for a whole year.
If it's something small, we need to get it done quickly.
We can start going, instead of having to wait a month and doing the procurement process, we can just go and get it done right away. It's, it's what we thought, we did this in Covington, and, uh, Mike and I talked about, we thought it'd be a good thing to do, it's very effective, because otherwise it takes so long to go through this process now, we've already got this done for a whole year, we can go to them on any project we need right away, and then get on.
Now, this pricing is only for projects that are the city's responsibility, not for a private citizen.
That's correct.
And just to clarify, the city's responsibility is the curb, the sidewalk is the property owner's responsibility.
That is correct.
Okay. I, 'cause you're gonna get a lot of questions on that, why are we fixing the sidewalk?
Right, that's exactly right, and then, there, there is the inner price, it's a little different for year two and three, for instance. The very first one goes from nine dollars to nine seventy-five, and then in year, year three, it goes up to another, to ten, another dollar, ten seventy-five. Those are, in our sole discretion, whether to accept those or not, because it's future years, but they're there, we gotta tie down. And wait, concrete's been going through the roof the last year, it's probably a good idea to try to do this right now.
There are questions regarding twenty, twenty-two, number five Romeo. Closing it out in three, two, and one, roll call, Ms. Ledger.
Did we have a motion?
We have a, we
No.
No, a motion to accept twenty-two, number five Romeo.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Second by Member Lovins. We already had our comments, anybody have any comments? All right, roll call, please, Ms. Ledger.
Member Neenan?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Lovins?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
And that concludes today's resolutions and orders. Moving right along to the Department of Reports. Let's go ahead and, uh, go in alphabetical order, Chief Atkins, do a please.
Thank you, sir. Uh, you all have my report, a couple things to touch on. Uh, we finished up this year about three percent higher on any mess runs than we had, than we did last year. We were up overall total for runs from this time for twenty twenty versus twenty twenty-one. I was gonna say, my report only had one out in COVID, that adds up about five o'clock this afternoon, and I'm now down three, that are out with COVID-related issues. Um, I'll actually drive the fire truck tomorrow, so I'm just humbled about that. But we did, I can say now, we have offered a job to someone, um, so we will be full, because we've been short for six months now. Um, it's someone who previously worked here, and decided that he would rather be back here than where he was. So he's coming back, um, starting next Monday. Um, touch on our Christmas program, which is another big success that we do every year, with, you know, we collaborate with both the schools. And we go out every year at Christmas Eve night with Santa Claus, and it's always a big hit, and we drop off toys and some meals. Um, both the police departments, um, again, we're a big, you know, we always work with them, so I want to give them a shout-out too, for especially for community involvement that they, they do with us. And that's really about all I have.
Big fan, what you guys do on Christmas, thanks for your helpful update.
Sir, we always like to be involved, we like to be in Santa Claus rides now, so if he's not here, he left, but so.
We appreciate that. Hey, I have a real quick question. Uh, tonight we talked about in the State of the City address, about the increase in, in, in pay. What, what's, what's the word of the floor, your guys, is everybody, are, are, are we, do we have a nice solid, uh, staff, are they staying, are they happy?
Um, they were very pleased that the cities heard, you know, what we were saying back last summer. Um, and our hope, the hope of the department is that we will keep moving forward, because through no fault of anybody else, we just, we fell behind over the years. So last year was a really good first step in catching up. Um, the biggest concern is making sure we continue to stay competitive.
Yeah.
So yes, everybody is, is happy, but, you know, moving forward, we want to make sure that we stay competitive, and I'm sure the police department as well, and public works. And you heard Mr. Burr, I mean, they're struggling for, to hire teachers, so it's not specifically to the fire department, the police departments, public services in general, the, the pool is running dry. But so we, as cities, need to do our, make sure we can, can keep the people we have, and I will go on record, but I'm not fourteen, fifteen people in the city by the time, so.
You're a great staff, and we thank you.
So again, thank you all for your support, um, over the years. Thank you for the people who reached out, I apologize for missing last month's council meeting, my father did pass away the day after the council meeting, so thank you all for the people who reached out for that. Appreciate that, and then I'll spend the next week making it, so.
Yeah, that's, thank you, uh, thank you for your, your work for our Commonwealth and our condolences.
I appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Uh, you guys are terrible. Thank you all.
I think you missed something.
Ballroom is over, I didn't get my kids.
Ballroom is over.
Yeah, right.
Hey, look at my phone, the ballroom is over yet.
No, I do have a question though, as we add like the new builds, how many more people do we need to add to the city before we have to update like firemen, policemen, isn't there like a certain code? Maybe five officers to every six thousand something, I don't know.
There's a requirement?
There's not a requirement, there are, there are standards that the fire departments like, would like us to do, but they're often almost impossible by chance to do. But you do want to keep a certain amount for ISO insurance purposes, so, um, you know, we have a pretty good ISO rating right now, and if you don't get enough, that rating would be adversely affected, which means insurance rates go up, so, that's your key factor, I think, from the city's perspective, make sure that you maintain an ISO rating that keeps your residents, it's cheap, insurance rates are possible.
I just didn't know if that new bill would change as we start-
We've talked about it a little bit, and so, you know, there, there are some concerns about that, so we need to look at that, and, uh, you know, hopefully, as new buildings come on, you know, the revenues generated from that, of course, that's in the TIP district, so we only get a small percentage of it, but, you know, it can help pay for more public, public safety services, because they're probably going to be needed.
Yeah, that was, I guess we'll, we'll talk with Jay and, and, and stuff, uh, just about, um, adding more bodies as we add more bodies to the city.
Right.
Uh, it's kind of my, uh, our goal, I guess, for, uh, twenty twenty-two, when we get together for, um, giving our visions of twenty twenty-two, how everybody can see the department per us in twenty twenty-two, so.
So we're going to a pretty in-depth budget process, this year Jared and I are working on it, and so those are all, those things we'll be looking at, and determining whether our services actually currently provide them are sufficient, or whether we need to look at that in the future. But that's all part of what we're going to do in the next three months, before we present a budget to you all, uh, you know, coming, thank you.
Thank you, Member Lovins, is there any answer? Um, I guess, you didn't map in your head.
While I'm here.
And, uh, next up, Chief Hat Hill for Dayton Police Department.
Uh, you guys have my monthly, uh, for December and yearly, um, I did make a mistake on the yearly, I didn't have the total for the traffic citations on the year, but, um, I'm trying to get it together, um, some graphs, and I'll try to get to you, just to see how we progressed over the past couple of years, not just, last year, try to go back to about twenty eighteen, like the last three years, try to compare numbers, uh, we are down, um, as far as, uh, statistics, as far as calls, domestics, thefts, and drug arrests and arrests in general, so that's good. And so you can see the gradual decrease of that happening, which means that, uh, we're out there and want our job, and people are defending less, and learning their lesson, uh, not reoffending, uh, so it's kind of a, a good thing, so. Any questions on that? All right, uh, the last thing I wanted to do was just give a shout out to Sergeant Wilkie, uh, I might just might put something on Facebook, it's kind of, she reached out to me, um, I guess it was the December twenty-ninth, where I guess a mother was sick. She couldn't get to Kroger, or it was the son's birthday, uh, so Officer Wilkie was at the house, found out that it was a child's birthday, and he didn't have a birthday cake. So he took it amongst himself to go to Kroger and bought him, bought the child a cake, and, uh, I guess the woman there was, you know, asking, oh, where are you taking that, I'll go with you to eat the cake, and he told her kind of what it was, so, she got on Facebook and gave a shout out, uh, to Sergeant Wilkie, and it's just, you know, things that we do that sometimes don't get recognized, and people don't see it, but I like to make it, you know, things like that more public now, so people are seeing, you know, kind of what we're doing and getting out there, just going above and beyond, we have, we do it all the time, and a lot of people just don't see it, and, but we do have, you know, something like that, that's pretty amazing, you know, I want to give kudos to Sergeant Wilkie on that, that was above and beyond.
Thank you to your staff, and also thanks for all you guys did with the Christmas season.
And, uh, Officer Link Google, I did a great job, you know, helping out with, uh, with Christmas, um, giving the kids, uh, I guess in front of the trash truck type thing that we had, uh, in front of the, in the lot of Dayton and things like that. Giving out presents, following the fire department around with, uh, City Bellevue, Police Department, and us just went around and delivering gifts and food for families. Um, he's continually, you know, he's got his list together for next year, um, which, you know, I'll give it Jared, uh, get that with him, you know, just the, for activities planned for twenty twenty-two, that we, you know, try to bring money into the city, uh, and certain departments that are doing, City Club and, Shop and Con, things like that.
He should be a teacher, not an officer. He should be a teacher, not an officer. That's his calling. Everything is for the kids, and he is fantastic.
Thank you very much, Chief, and good evening. How's that thing, Mr. Lucas, you're up next, public works.
Everybody should have a copy of my report. Um, any questions, I mean, we're staying busy and-
You've got a big week coming up.
Yeah.
Supposed to get a couple of wishes, I hear.
No, thank you probably, I'm like, we have, we have three trucks set up.
They changed it to eight to ten.
Yeah. Yeah, but, um, there's some, as soon as I get a little time, there's some signs I need to run, I want to update some stop signs to you on the page. There's a couple of street signs I need to, um, add, Chateau and Dayton Pike, I guess he's been on me for about, I mean, months. And there's one at Jetha McKenna I know is missing. So when I get time, I'll take a ride and start getting orders and then replacing and that kind of stuff. I did get some signy junk down on Tethin Oak Island, and some stop bars and things, but I didn't get it completed, because the paint just won't dry, I mean, I painted a couple of stop bars and, took us all day, I had a torch down there trying to heat the road, and trying to get it to dry. But, um, did get the Do Not Enter signs on Fourth Street, some on, uh, that right there behind the dollar store. And I think the way we changed that, brought that stop sign all the way up, and I'm seeing cars that actually stopped there now.
Right. And, uh, you also got some salt blured here recently, so we'll-
Yeah, we brought in, while we were, uh, twenty-five tons, it came in like twenty-two and a half ton. And, uh, we have about a hundred ton on stock, so it's been stopped.
We're good to go.
Yeah, and every time I use twenty-five tons, I'll bring in twenty, twenty-five, because problem is with our salt, and if I bring in too much, we, we waste a lot-
Right, exactly.
From the rain. And, uh, but other than that, we got the mowers all put away, they all didn't want to ride. Waiting order back, uh, the last call I got was, uh, due January the eighteenth now. But there's no promise on that either, I mean, everything is so far out. And they started backfilling ten fifteen Seventh Street today.
Ten thirteen, yeah, I'm just going to mention that in my report, so-
Oh, okay.
One of our top ten properties, um, ten thirteen Seventh, which is a problem property for years, the cat house, literally, the cats live in that house, um-
And a few raccoons.
Ran in raccoons, yeah, they took the, apparently when we started-
Very large raccoons.
Started tearing it down, both families, um, maybe several families of raccoons came out of the roof.
Did they move up to River Point?
What's that?
Did they move up to River Point?
Give me my, they were heading in that direction. So, yeah, that's down, so that's two properties on that street, and then there's one other one on Boom, the other one that's abandoned. I just got an email from our lawyer today saying that that has been, uh, motion's been filed, we heard on Friday, to refer that to Master Commissioner to get that one, uh, sold, and hopefully we can acquire and tear that one down too, so.
It'll take at least a month or so to get the utilities abandoned, if they haven't already done.
Yeah, I think, I, yeah, I, on, on the one on Seventh?
On the one-
And the one on Seventh is done.
The one besides Seventh, one billion, okay.
Downer, Downer is like seven oh five, Boom.
All their ones, yeah.
That's the one, the really bad one that's still there.
That's the one I thought you were talking about, yeah.
Is that, is the utilities, are they still?
I have no idea.
Yeah, I think it's still-
I'm sure the power's down.
Yeah, the power's off, but I think the utilities are there.
I don't know if it's been abandoned from the street.
Well, we don't want to worry about that until we know whether we're going to acquire it and be able to acquire it or not, but anyway, that's, that's the, that's three in that area that are on our top ten or close to being resolved, so that's good.
Now, are we offering anyone to buy and rebuild, or are we just going to have a bunch of empty lots?
I think, I think in this particular area, it's strategically smart to hold those lots, that's a potential development area, and I think we want to control that development, so in this area, I think we want to hold these lots for a while, to see, I can see someone buying up other lots and wanting to develop.
So we are going to offer up something, like right across from Shell?
Other, other, yeah, others, others that are strategic, I would say, if the neighbor wants to buy it, or if we have to put an infill house, we should definitely do that. And so we're, speaking of infill houses, one of the things we're going to be doing, and, um, we have a planning commission meeting tomorrow night, to talk about the industrial, zone changes, but next month, February, or maybe March, I'm not sure, because of COVID, when that's going to be, um, we're going to probably do changes to allow, put regulations in infill houses, so we have some control about what goes into infill properties in the city. Right now, there's no, you can put that any you want in there, and we wanted to make sure it's reflected in the neighborhood and has certain standards, so, um, that's coming up. Anyway, I'll, I'll get up top there in a little bit, so, yeah, so we will sell properties for infill and other areas where it's appropriate, but in some places, we probably want to hold on to them, because strategically, it's better for us to have it, to have some control over that development than to give the third parties who just going to sit on it themselves.
And that's about it for my report, try to get on Christmas decorations. We're moving those tomorrow, hopefully just started on that, because I had two guys off today, one was on vacation and the other had, uh, personal issues.
Sure. Hope you Christmas, Christmas looked great, Rick.
Yeah, and, uh, enough, but, uh, we'll get, start taking those down a little bit tomorrow, and then get ready for a little snow, we're going to get thirsty.
Come on, you can't complain, it's not coming to after lunch, so God.
That's the worst time.
But I'm just saying, I mean-
The best time for it to come in is like midnight or later. Rush hour is, is terrible, we, I mean, when it hits during rush hour, we have problems getting around that, because people get stuck and run over and, yeah, that, midnight's a good time to get in there, you know, gives us time to get a lot of salt, kind of, for rush hour, come down. Other than that.
With the work on Dayton Pike and the Jamestown Pike Park, with the survey, SD ones been doing up there?
That's, that, no, we've been doing that, that's us.
We've been doing?
It's more than SD one project that we are doing, we're doing all the work.
Do we foresee any construction work in the next six months up there, or?
Um, we're, we're trying, we'll talk about it in a minute, we're trying to get to the SD one board this month with a proposal for several projects, and that's one of them, that's a fifty-fifty match. Uh, they approve it, that, that project will be done, that includes Chateau Ridge too. Uh, this year, we're hopeful that they will approve it, we can, you know, this year if we have that money, that our company will help if they were on that.
So that project would be under our control, not SD one?
Well, SD one has to sign off and approve it all, but we, we're the ones driving it, that's correct.
I just didn't know it's, when we start, you know, SD one comes back six months later after the sidewalks, and hence to say we're going to do this work, and we, but as long as we have control over it.
Yeah, so the project we're working on right now, hopefully, we talked about doing a whole retention area there, deal with that. Um, that, we may not be doing that right now, if we did that, we might have to cut a section of sidewalk out in the future, but, um, Mike still worked on that a little bit, that's going to be included in this project. It's a little too expensive for us right now to do that.
Other than that? I have nothing else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. A comparison.
Um, you have my report, and December is kind of a month to kind of, get everything going back in the office, filing, all that type of thing, people don't take care to get some decisions in December. So we try to kind of keep that at a minimum, if possible, um, so, yeah. So we've been doing a lot of that, um, working with KSC and the police department, kind of beefing up the nuisance violations and citations, and looking at all the police reports, and, we, I get reports from the fire department regarding their ambulance runs, we kind of pick those apart and see what we would think would be a nuisance, um, and then KSC pulls the reports in the police department and kind of look at those. Jay said ten fifteen Seventh, it's, it's gone, and, um, the one there by Jessica on Fourth Avenue, they finally have that completely finished, the county signed off on it. The one on Eighth Avenue, four fifteen eight, I talked to them, and, um, the guy's having a really hard time finding contractors. So he, his plan is to hopefully, after the first of the year, um, get going on that. Um, and then ten twenty-third, they're still working on that, um, it's coming around, so. Other than that, it's kind of been an interesting month. Jared and I did some computer training on the system we use, and what we're gonna, we're going to try to change a few things that are going to work better, um. We're training with Rick.
You're, you're purging all the old files that go on here.
So we went through and all the files from the day I started back. We had to go in and close those, you have to close them in three separate locations, so it's kind of tedious, um. What else? I think that's about it.
We need to, we need to create or invent something like AmZion, how they scan the package, you scan the house, and everything goes right there. I mean, you can send a letter, like it pops off, I don't know.
But we do have, we do have, um, an iPad that we're going to try, hopefully, so I can get everything completed in the field and just send it to the printer.
Well, you'd have to be like click on the house, and then it says, send this letter, this letter, this letter, where everything is just, can automatically be mailed, but at the end of the day, you should be able to download it, and the letter should out, Donna mails them, and-
Yeah.
We don't have to handwrite on little sticky notes when you walk house to house, I mean-
I know, that would be great, wouldn't it?
I mean, because that, I thought it was horrid, having to go house to house.
It's bad.
Writing it down on a piece of paper, or on a little tag, and then remember to go back in twenty days.
It is, it's a lot of, it's, it, the system that they have, that we have, kind of leaves a lot of room for error.
Yeah.
So, right now, I'm going out, taking a picture with my phone, I emailed myself with the address, waiting on time I get back, you know, etc.
You know how you have that map right there and all that, he should be able to load up every house and-
Well, and that's, you threw, you got that all off our work, correct?
I'm sorry?
Your maps, your window maps and all that stuff?
Yes.
So we have, we have the ability to do a lot of things in the system, but unfortunately, the way that we do are, the citation and the notice part of it is a very-
Jared, I mean, you click it, you click this house, you go back and print, someone delivers it the next day, or vice versa, and-
Yeah, we're, we're working on it.
Yeah, that's what we're kind of trying to work on.
The handwritten love notes is the prettiest, I mean, I'm just saying.
I know, it's, I know, it could be interesting, so, yeah. But, yeah, that's about it, it's been, I mean, it's been a busy month, but it's, it's kind of a whole different- But, yeah, that's about it, it's been, I mean, it's been a busy month, but it's, it's kind of a whole different busy, so.
Okay, that's all. Can we spill it right now, while, uh, we're waiting on Jeff?
Uh, yeah, extend your cord.
Are you active?
What'd you say, I'm sorry?
Jay's the next on our, our, uh, poll list, too.
Just move right around, Jay.
Move it around here.
Move right around, let's see.
All right, um, we're gonna jump out, Jay, uh, oh, well, that was made a kiln ton there, let's see. You got jokes? I'll see his, turn his report.
How did you just?
Two, eight. One man, that's all it is.
Take yours, uh, he had a little technical issue there, the battery went bad, and.
Right. Can't your eyes perceive mission reports? Probably kill him, buddy.
Hello?
Hey, Doug.
Your battery died.
Yeah, I know, we're, we're working on it now.
Okay. They're fixing it, no, they're fixing it.
Until then, we just, until then, we'll just put you over here.
Who's he talking to? Way on the phone.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting close, I'll put you up here, and then when Jared's working on it, when the battery's charged up enough, we'll put you back on the main feed.
He's sitting next to that.
I know. I don't know. You're paying partial her bill next month.
All right, we moved right along to City, then Travis Possum, what you got for torque?
Sorry for the delay there, um, there are a couple of things, I know it's been long meetings, I won't take too long, but a couple of things I wanna talk about, uh, tonight, are, uh, some infrastructure issues, uh, one is roads, we're planning to do some paving of roads this coming year. Rick and I and Mike Yeager have been looking at our roads, and we had Mike Yeager do an assessment of all the roads in the city, and rated them from best to worst. Um, provided that to the city council, of course, we only have a limited amount of money, we have municipal funding, and the past, Donna says we used to get a couple hundred thousand dollars, and that's maybe two fifty even, uh, a year, we're down to about a hundred thousand dollars a year now, um, that, that's gone down, because they not raised the tax, the, uh, gasoline tax, so, that number keeps on going down, but we do have about two hundred forty thousand dollars in our fund currently, and we're recommending to make some, uh, improvements that will, we'll take about two hundred thousand of dollars of that, plus we're gonna use thirty thousand for the, uh, O'Fallon, Fifth, and, um, Manhattan Boulevard improvements too, so that will, uh, give us about ten thousand dollars left in that amount, but we get another ten thousand about every month, so that will continue to add back up, so we don't have some money in reserve in case things come up, so. Anyway, so what I recommend to do is, by the way, um, based on what I've seen in streets around Northern Kentucky, including my time in Covey Bend and booking Bellevue and other places, overall, our streets in Dayton are in fairly good shape, most of them, um, of course, you always have to maintain them, but I've been impressed with the quality of most of the streets. There are pockets here and there that are bad, but, uh, they're not as bad as I've seen in other communities, so I think that's a good thing that you have here in terms of your strategy. Might be because the underlying streets, we have some streets that are bad, that were, don't have very good bases.
Right.
Uh, but we have a lot of streets that have those brick bases underneath, and the Germans put, grassed them within years ago, and those created nice foundation, also not disrupted by the utilities coming in.
That's, that's a lot of our streets that are really damaged.
Yeah, that's the problem, but.
It's from the utility.
Probably those good bases, but the, at least those brick streets, we, we have, um, we can make our asphalt walk in and normal, so anyway, um, so based on our review and our meetings Rick and I have with Mike, uh, we recommended that nine streets, uh, be repaved this summer. The time to do the repaving, admitting is down, and there, you get much cheaper rates down than you will in the spring and the fall, is he on now?
He's on this one.
Okay, um, and so, uh, so what I'm recommending is, uh, and what we're recommending is, uh, is, um, me and Jerry and Public Works, uh, team, is that we do Benham from second to third, Chateau from Dayton, uh, Pike to Dayton Avenue, McKenney from tenth to Vermont, uh, Fifth Avenue from Main to Kenton, Benham from third to fourth, Brooklyn from Dayton to the end, Urban from eighth to ninth, and then O'Fallon, and this is all gonna be dependent upon whether the work is done on O'Fallon up there, Red Knott, we think that will be done this summer, and once that's done, we wanna be able to re, repave that portion of Red Knott, I mean, that portion of O'Fallon, where Red Knott is doing their work, which is tenth and Furman, and then go one more block down to ninth and Furman. We recognize that we probably need to do Berry Street between Sixth and Fifth, but we wanna hold off on that until we're done with the Berry Street connector, because we're afraid that heavy equipment's going to damage that street, and we're, from, from fifth on, it's in pretty good shape, it's been repaved in the last couple of years, but we're not sure exactly what's gonna happen with trucks running over that, if they could do that, so what we're gonna do is kind of hold off a week and see if they've got that extra ten thousand, and maybe by that time, thirty or forty thousand more hours left, we may wanna, since that's gonna be a random road, it'd be silly not to have a nice road going into it, so, um, that's a possibility, and these numbers may come back higher, and if that's the case, we gotta knock one or two of these streets off, or they may come back lower, and if that's the case, um, we might be able to add another street or two. We were, we were surprised at the numbers that Rick got for asphalt this year, because it was a little bit cheaper than last year, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, with this pandemic, everything is so crazy, so we don't know, at this moment, it looks pretty good in terms of doing these streets, but that may change in the future, so. Any questions about that, and again, these are the top streets in terms of priority list based on condition that Mike Yeager and his crews have evaluated, so we're trying to do it in a very fair manner in saying, let's go to the worst streets first, we got a couple of streets like Seventh, um, which is pretty good up to the, the, where the, the, where the, um, hillside is slipping, that's such an expensive project, though, uh, we don't wanna do any pavement on there, especially up to that point, it's been repaved a few years ago, it's not too bad, but, we need to do major work there, and we gotta find a grant or something to help us make that happen, so that's a, a bigger project, and once that's done, then we can repave that, but I don't, it's, it's a high priority on our list, but it's not a high priority right now, because we don't have the money to do that, that, that major project, and only affects a couple of houses, quite honestly, at this point, in the future, that might be developed. So anyway, that's the, uh, that's our recommendations, I just wanted to get it out there, we will need to update our budget, uh, to reflect this, and we've got some other changes we need to make in February to our budget, so we'll add this to that as well, and, uh, that's why I would just let you know, there's no vote on it, I just was telling you this, this is what our plans are. If you have any concerns, questions, let me know. Um, the other thing is stormwater mitigation is the other infrastructure project I wanna talk about, I've been working with Mike Yeager on, uh, several stormwater mitigation projects, which we hope to get to SD one at this next board meeting, uh, there are four that are, that are teed up and ready to go, um, Kenton and fourth is a big problem, that, uh, has been designed to ready to go, um, Urban Terrace is, is designed, and it's ready, it's almost ready, it's almost, the final design's almost done on that. Dayton Pike and Chateau Ridge is a major issue, we're looking at doing that, and then Grant Park, uh, is an issue, we're gonna do a trial run there, fixing three, uh, of the projects, uh, three of the problems there. And then we have another one now that came onto our list lately, was Third and Walnut, uh, and that was not an SD one yet, the developer's supposed to be making, Brandon Sullivan's group's supposed to be making some improvements, we hope will address the issue, and if that addresses it, then we don't need to go to SD one, but with these other four, this is SD one's vacuum grant program, so we will, uh, be using, uh, ARPA funds, which we can use for stormwater projects, to get these four projects we've needed to do for a long time, finally done, we're hoping to get them done, not hopefully this year, but it could be into next year depending on, um, availability of contractors, so, um, we hope to get that for SD one, and get them to sign off on it, that's gonna take some time too, uh, but we will use S, our ARPA funds to match that, and, uh, in Grant Park, we're gonna be working to deal with the homeowner association, they're paying, they'll pay a portion of it, and then, and then we're gonna be using funds that we are retaining from the, uh, tip in that area for, uh, payment on, on that project, so.
Jay, more ARPA funds to pay for the total match?
Yes, so, yeah, that's, 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 yes, stormwater is one of the things that they are, it's clear that they cover, so we're taking advantage of that, so, um, I'm, the numbers are coming back, and I'll give you full numbers when they're finished, so you'll know what our match is going to be, and, and I'll give us an update on where our ARPA funds are in terms of what we spent so far. Uh, the good thing is that I know we're gonna use some of those funds for the, um, Remy building, but we can spread that over, over some time, uh, so maybe only a, 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 a third of that needs to be paid this year, in this fiscal year, and then we can do the rest next year, so. Anyway, that's kind of an update on those infrastructure issues, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Possum, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Possum? All right. We already, what do you, uh, vast audience out there to our home viewers, so anybody in the audience have elected first counsel, would welcome to do so. Close now, participation through two, and it is closed, do we have any unfinished business for the evening? Any unfinished business, closing that, do we have any new business?
Business.
New business, anyone, anyone? Is there a reason for executive session this evening?
There is not.
No reason for executive session, so if I'm listening for a German.
So, move.
Mr. Volker, always good to have second about this evening, we all favor.
Bye.
See you next one.